Ready when you are. Yeah. Huh? No, I said tell. Mm-hmm. It's okay. Vice Mayor. Ready when you are.
Let's get started. Oops. You gotta turn your volume off. Now. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Uh, thank you for everybody coming. Uh, today is our regular commission meeting, Tuesday, March fourth, twenty twenty-five. Um, we'll get called to order, uh, with the roll call.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Angela.
Here.
Commissioner Huntington.
Here.
Commissioner Samara.
Yeah.
Miss Vice Mayor, you have the mayor's absent, you have a corner.
All right, uh, let's do the pledge allegiance, please.
By the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Right. We've done the pledge, we'll go on to additions, deletions, and withdrawals.
Uh, yes.
Yes, sir.
What I like to do is have where, uh, I don't see it on here, Commissioner Reports. I don't see it. So I want to be sure that we add that on. Commissioner Report.
One as well. I have another one. Oh.
No, I was gonna say Commissioner Reports come right before, um, staff reports. They usually come right before staff reports.
For staff reports?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, okay. Yes, uh.
And I have another one regarding the current changes that are undergoing the police department. Uh, I don't know if you all received a copy of the item itself. I did request earlier today that it be shared with you all. Um, I was told that walk-on items are against the code, so I couldn't do that. But, uh, we have done it in all my tenure as a Commissioner. It's the first time I receive a notice that we cannot, uh, have walk-on items. Um, I think it's sort of an emergency that we discuss this. There are changes happening as we speak. And I wanna speak about what those means for the goals we had in place when we made the budget, uh, last year, about four years ago. I wanna speak about how that impacts the current projects that we've been seeing from the police department and directly the budget itself. So, um, I think it's an important item. Again, it was, uh, not shared with you with those, uh, terms. And for me, even makes it more of a, an important item to bring up. So I would like to see it added, uh, hopefully before the end of the day, but I will let you two decide where.
I, I didn't, I didn't receive it. I'm receiving it now. Um, and I think from, from my, uh, view of history, uh, actually, we've discouraged walk-on items, um, without proper preparation, without proper notice, right? And I think we've talked about that and you've been here.
Yep.
Um, so we have talked about that and there is precedent for that. So bringing this here, in my opinion, now at the last minute, I think that, uh, I'm not ready to discuss this. I haven't even read your memo. Um, and I think that if you feel that it's an emergency, um, I don't think it's an emergency, but if you feel it's an emergency, perhaps, you know, we need to call a special meeting to discuss that.
Okay.
But for me, uh, and we're four of us, so at the end of the day, with the, you know, the majority rules here, right? So, but for me, I don't, I'm not ready to, today, to go through this and discuss this during the meeting.
Before you all make your, your terms here, also recognize that not once, anytime this has happened before, the code was, uh, brought up as an excuse not to do it. Uh, it's since I've been a Commissioner for over two years, any walk-on items has been approved, even if it was in an emergency. I am pretty sure the reason it's been brought up this way, and it doesn't, it, you know, it wasn't shared, is because the manager doesn't want me to bring it up. And doesn't want me to speak about this today. And so for that reason, as we are currently in the midst of transitioning police department heads and looking for the right person to lead us, it is important to have a conversation. If you've done it in the past for things that have been not noticed an emergency, and I'm thinking this, you know, if we wait another week or so, uh, you know, things are happening as we go, um, we are, you know, in a way behind the ball. And I wanna put the conversation in front of it. Um, I'm not suggesting this is a life or death emergency, as our code suggests, but I'm just saying, I wanna be mindful that the times it's been brought up as an, as an item, as a walk-on item, it'd have been for several reasons different than this and accept it. So this will be precedent, at least in the two years plus. I don't have, in any commission meeting that I've seen online, either, uh, seen that they've been requested to be canceled. So, I just wanted you to have that. I, uh, of course, support whatever you think about that.
All right, well, again, I, I, I'm not ready to discuss this. I don't know what the manager feels or thinks, um, but I.
Didn't wanna include it.
How I feel and think.
Yeah.
Um, so, but, but at the end of the day, it's whatever you guys.
I, I agree with Vice Mayor Gonzalez. Uh, it's a lot to read and it's a heavy topic. And I didn't come prepared for this. I didn't even know about it till about an hour ago, and I didn't receive it until just now. So I'm not prepared to talk on it. So I understand what was done historically with walk-on items. But this is a, a heavy wa- walk-on item. And we've been, had talks about this recently, how we're discouraging walk-on items. We, we would like backup, we would like preparation, you.
You have the backup of the preparation. It wasn't shared with you. I, I had a conversation about this at nine A.M. in the morning with the manager. I was told at three P.M., it's not gonna be.
Understand, but I did not receive it and, and that's.
Okay.
Here nor there. It's the fact that we're not prepared to talk. I'm not prepared to talk. So I'm not comfortable.
I, I, I think it's, everything you're saying, I think is a very important item, because I had, I brought up a discussion item to be brought onto this, to this meeting. And in the past, we have had so many items brought up and there was never really any strict rules. I had a, a discussion item and mine was turned down, and I believe it's turned down for the same reason as yours is.
No, yours was turned down because it had no backup.
But the backup that I couldn't have was the two emails that were told by the two, so we couldn't share that. So that was the backup. But it, but it was given it on time. Okay, and, um, so, uh, I, I just think your item's very important and I would, uh, I, I don't have a problem with it being brought up.
Okay.
Nope. If, if there's no consensus, then the request dies. So we move along. Okay, um.
Vice Mayor, if I could.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you, you had asked to move your.
So if we can move, uh, the reports, which are eight, remove those to eleven A.
Yeah, the, the, the manager report, correct?
All the reports.
Oh, all of the reports. Sounds like a plan to me. I mean, uh, okay. So then, um, that brings us along to our presentations. We have, uh, Mr. Javier Betancourt.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry. You need a motion to approve.
Yes, I'm sorry. Motion to approve, uh.
Need a motion in a second to approve the, the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve amendment, uh, agenda as amended.
I'll second it.
Um, I, can I say no if I, I don't agree with the amendment?
You, you certainly can.
Okay, so no.
Need a second.
So it was a second, it was, uh.
No, I, I'm saying no.
Well, hold on. So the motion hasn't been seconded.
Um, if I'm agreeing with the Commissioner, then it has to be no.
So I'll second it.
Okay. And then is there a cons- if there's no consensus, then the agenda stays the way it is. So its agenda stays the way it is? All right. Okay, so then now our presentation with, uh, Mr. Betancourt. He's the Executive Director for Citizens Independent Trust. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, members of the community. Um, again, Javier Betancourt, Executive Director of the Citizens Independent Transportation Trust. I'll refer to that as C I T T moving forward. It's a lot easier for everyone. Thank you for allotting some time on your agenda for me to speak. I know it's a long presentation, but I'm gonna fly through it very quickly. Um, if you need me to slow down, please let me know. Oh, okay. I am expecting someone from my team to join us. She's stuck in traffic, ironically enough. And she's, uh, Mariana Price, our Municipal Program Manager. So if she shows up, I don't have to introduce her again. Um, is there a clicker or do I just say next? Okay, so next. Once you get her, once you get her going. There is just a, you know, one-page newsletter that we put out that is being handed out to you now. All right, just give that another second. Okay, next. I should say that prior to being in this role where I've been for seven years, I did work for the city of Coral Gables, so I have a municipal background. I appreciate all the hard work you do at the municipal level, so thank you. Um, if you were a voter about twenty-three years from now and you went to your ballot, uh, excuse me, you went to your voting precinct, you may have seen this referendum on your ballot. Uh, essentially asked the voters if they would increase their sales tax from six and a half to seven percent. That half penny being called the, uh, half penny sales tax for transportation under a, a list of projects called the People's Transportation Plan. Some of you may remember that from a couple of decades ago. Uh, it's important to note the last line in that referendum language, where the voters also established the Citizens Independent Transportation Trust, C I T T, to oversee the use of those funds by both the county, which gets roughly eighty percent of them, and the cities, which collectively get about twenty percent of them, to ensure that those dollars were used appropriately and for the purposes for which it was created. Next. So the C I T T, uh, the organization I'm with, uh, we're a quasi-independent agency of Miami-Dade County, charged with overseeing those funds. We monitor, audit, review, and investigate the use of surtax proceeds by the county and the cities, and the implementation of the People's Transportation Plan. It's important to note, we are not Miami-Dade Transit, we are not the Department of Transportation and Public Works. We don't build, operate, maintain any of it, and we're not the TPO. We don't do the long-range planning and assign, uh, other funding sources. We're strictly a watchdog over the half penny funds. Next. We are overseen by a fifteen-member board of volunteers, uh, one appointed by the county mayor, one by the League of Cities, and thirteen by each of the thirteen county commissioners. You're actually very lucky in that I believe you're in District Four, County Commissioner, uh, Mickey Steinberg's district. Um, so her appointee is the, the current Chair of the Transportation Trust, Robert Wolfart. So you're in very good hands, um, at that level. Next. If you're interested in becoming a member of the trust, again, these are volunteers from all walks of life, uh, please, submit an application. Visit our website, miamidade.gov/cit. We do have a handful of vacancies. We're always keeping applications on file for when vacancies occur. Essentially, you can't be an elected or appointed official. You have to live in the district of the Commissioner that appoints you, and you can't have any conflicts of interest with the county. Other than that, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll take anyone from any profession. Next. Uh, that trust, uh, volunteers is then, uh, supported by my office, the Office of the C I T T, where, uh, the smallest office in Miami-Dade County. And we do a lot of the analysis and, you know, review the, the requests for the use of surtax proceeds, um, and then over, oversee all the compliance, um, by the county and the cities. Um, and I'm proud to say that our operating budget is probably the smallest of any department in the county at just four million dollars, which represents less than one percent of surtax proceeds. Next. One of our primary functions is to audit the county and the cities on a regular basis to ensure that you're spending the funds appropriately. Um, I believe an audit of the village is about to start sometime later this year. We do them about every three to five years, especially for the smaller cities. Next. So enough about us. Now let's talk about the money. Uh, so a half penny, uh, next, I'm sorry. A half penny may not seem like a lot, but, uh, you know, it actually adds up. So we're currently collecting about four hundred million dollars, plus or minus, a year in that half penny funds. Since the inception of the program over twenty years ago, we've collected almost five billion dollars. So that little half penny is nothing to sneeze at. Um, there's a lot of misinformation in the community as to how it's been misspent or misspent on other things. The truth is sixty-three percent has been spent on transit. It has gone to the county's transit department. Twenty, over twenty percent has gone to the municipalities for your use on transportation and transit projects. Uh, and that was per an agreement that was reached during the referendum. Less than ten percent has gone to the county's Public Works Department for roadway type of projects. So, you know, roadways are important, but it's actually been a very small percentage of what's been spent. And we have about eight percent in reserve for future projects. As I said, that little one percent there is us. We're allowed to spend up to five percent, um, of surtax proceeds on what we do, but we limit it to one percent, because we want the bulk of the funds spent on the street where it can help to move people. Next. So over the course of those twenty-eight years, you see how the collections has generally gone up, with the exception of the recession, and, uh, obviously more recently, the pandemic. But it has grown considerably over time and hopefully will continue to do so. This surtax, I should add, is in perpetuity. There is no, uh, end date. Next.
I'm sorry, just one second.
Please.
Not to interrupt. Uh, can you check time a little bit? The presentation in the Zoom is matching what we're seeing here? It's in the first slide, so people that are connected on Zoom cannot follow what he's saying against the slides they're being shown. All right, we're cheated first slide. There you go. You hit the next slide. Let's. Transitioning. Yeah. You got it. Thank you. Sorry.
Uh, can you go back about three slides? Think you got ahead of me there. Well, yeah, that'll do. So, uh, okay, so this is our current annual year budget for surtax funds. All this really demonstrates is that the inc- the, uh, percentage that's going to transit is actually increasing. As roadway projects are completed, we're not adding new roadway projects to the mix, because we really wanna focus our attention on transit, which is where we are furthest behind, from where we wanna be and compared to pure cities throughout the country. Next. If you're really interested in the dollars, there are some people who really like to geek out on this. Uh, we have every detail over forty years, um, on our website in this forty-year pro forma. It shows every penny going in, every penny go- going out. I won't go into it in detail or it'll be here all night, but please, uh, you can find that on our webpage. Next. So enough about us and our, the money. Now let's talk about the projects, programs, and services. Nope. Um, that, uh, the half penny has paid for and will be paying for. Next. So a lot of promises were made back in two thousand and two, when this was presented to the voters. Uh, and that was as a result of dozens, if not hundreds, of public meetings that were held, uh, to hear from the public on what they wanted this fund, these funds to go towards. So of those promises, again, twenty percent promised to the cities right away. And by the way, that's, that's distributed to the cities on a pro rata basis. So obviously by population, this being a small city, by residential population, you don't get a ton of funds. City Miami gets a lot, right? It's just the way it is. Uh, but we also promised fair, free transit for all seniors, regardless of income, what is now called the Golden Passport. Fair, free Metro mover, uh, a number of smaller neighborhood improvement programs, like traffic circles and, and intersection improvements, bus service improvements, major highway and roadway improvements, again, over forty projects that were listed from the very beginning. Uh, people tend to forget about that. And then finally, the expansion of Metro Rail, uh, to several, uh, along several corridors throughout the county. And that is the part that people seem to remember, and that is the part where we've done the, the least, to be honest. Next. But to me, one of the most successful part of the programs has been the municipal program. That twenty percent that we give to the municipalities, you've really spent it well. Um, all the cities at this point are running some kind of transit service, whether it's a fixed route circulator, like people call them trolleys, or increasingly on-demand service, um, through vendors like Freebie, and I believe you run one of those now. Uh, some communities, as you can see here, do both. Both an on-demand service and fixed route circulator. So a lot of good things happening. That's in addition to all the different roadway projects that municipalities are also funding. Traffic circles, bicycle pedestrian improvements, roadway, uh, improvements, et cetera. Next. And the Village of Biscayne Park specifically, again, you don't get a ton of funds, just given, uh, your small size. Um, you're supposed to spend a minimum of twenty percent of that on transit. The other eighty percent you can spend on other transportation improvements, roadways, et cetera. Um, and I do know that you run a Freebie, uh, on-demand service, uh, with those funds. We're currently withholding funds, funds from the cities, because there are some compliance issues that have been in place for a long time. We're working very closely with your administration, uh, to get those addressed, so that we can release those funds back to you, and I think we're making some good progress under, uh, the leadership. So thank you for working closely with us, sir. And in fact, we just had a meeting, what, a few weeks ago, right, to go through some of those things. Next. Again, a lot, some of the money's going to roadways. Most of that is completed. That's all this is telling you. Next. But the real focus, I'm sorry, before I get there, uh, one project that's kinda roadway-related and actually is really important is Advanced Traffic Management System. So this is a fancy terminology for smart signals. We all hate it when we see it at an intersection and we know we could go, but that red light is still there because it's on a timer. That's antiquated technology, and other parts of the country have really caught up and have, uh, instituted this system so that you can adapt the traffic signals according to the conditions at the moment, right? There's no traffic coming through, there's no reason for you to wait. This new technology will let you go through a lot faster. So it's meant to make our existing roadways and, and intersections more efficient to save people time. The first phase of this project was completed. It demonstrated a savings about fifteen to twenty percent of time. Where it was implemented, the county's now implementing, uh, the final phases of this. So, next. But really, what we wanna focus our attention on, as I said earlier, is transit. Now, a lot of money has been spent on transit, on replacing the entire Metro Rail, Metro Mover, and Metro Bus fleet, on expanding the Metro Rail to, uh, the airport, on, um, several bicycle pedestrian trails and other first-last-mile solutions that connect to transit. And we even invested in Tri-Rail, both in a platform on Miami Central Station and downtown, and hopefully what will be a future Tri-Rail station at the Aventura-Brightline Station. Um, and so that, you know, we have been making, uh, some investments in transit, but the bulk of the funds that have gone to transit, quite frankly, have gone to upgrade the existing infrastructure. This system is in a really bad state of disrepair or has been. And so we've had to invest a lot of the funds, not on expanding transit, but on upgrading and fixing what we have. You can't build a second story on a house when, you know, the first story is crumbling. So the good news is a lot of that has been done, and now we can move towards expansion. Next. Something I believe you, you do know about, um, is the Better Bus Network. Now, this isn't something that we're involved in, uh, but there was a complete redo of the entire bus system. There were some winners in that, there were some losers. I understand you may have lost a bus route. Uh, it, it hasn't been a perfect rollout, but it has largely improved the overall system. The good news is if you continue to have issues with something you may have lost or something that was rerouted not to your satisfaction, the Transit Department is currently taking feedback, um, and adjusting the Better Bus Network as needed. So if you have any existing issues with bus routes that were either eliminated or aren't doing what you want, please contact the Department of Transportation and Public Works, or I'm happy to facilitate that discussion. Just let me know. Next. As I said earlier, the one extension of Metro that was accomplished was the extension to the airport, which is fantastic. We need to get more people to use it. Um, but, uh, it does a great job of connecting both visitors, but also residents and workers, you know, to the airport. And it is one of our largest, largest employment centers, so that's important. Next. Unfortunately, other than the expansion of Metro Rail to the airport, the county hasn't done a great job of actually expanding the rapid transit. Um, a lot of promises were made and they, and they frankly just haven't been fulfilled. The good news is we're now on track to do that. There's something called the Strategic Miami Area Rapid Transit Plan or Smart Plan. And the map for the Smart Plan is exactly the same as the map that was presented to the voters twenty years ago, uh, for the People's Transportation Plan. Same corridors, um, just rebranded. Next. So there are six corridors, uh, in some stage of development or planning, and they are, yeah, there we go. The South Corridor, the Beach Corridor, the East-West Corridor, Kendall Corridor, Northeast Corridor, and the North Corridor. Next. South Corridor, uh, has been under construction. If you ever head down south from Dade Land South to Florida City, uh, just along South Dixie Highway, you'll see this actively under construction, beautiful stations. It is gonna be gold standard bus rapid transit. It is a bus that essentially behaves like a train. There's pre-level boarding, there, I'm sorry, prepaid fares, level boarding. Uh, it's not gonna have to stop at intersections. It'll blow right through with gate arms that come down as the bus is approached. So it's a lot cheaper and a lot faster to do than a train, but offers many of the same benefits. This project is slated to, uh, begin service this July, so that's really exciting. Next. The Beach Corridor, what some may remember as Baylink, uh, is a project to connect downtown to Miami Beach, and then also a leg up towards the Design District. Um, this is still being, uh, planned. Um, the city of Miami Beach actually pushed back a little bit on the proposal, which is, uh, to institute a Metro Mover extension, both across the Causeway and up to the Design District. Stay tuned for that. Next. Another one that we've kinda taken a step back on unfortunately is the East-West Corridor. So this was originally slated to be bus rapid transit along State Road Eight Thirty-Six. The county commission has decided maybe that's not the best approach and is taking a step back to evaluate alternatives. Potentially commuter rail along the existing CSX lines, or potentially even Metro Mover on Flagler Street. So they're reevaluating all of that. Next. The Kendall Corridor, this is probably the one that's least, uh, or I'm sorry, um, furthest behind. Um, again, also slated to be some kind of bus rapid transit. A lot of controversy in that community about that, because it would necessitate taking away a lane of traffic in a place that's already gridlocked. So, you know, that's kinda been pushed aside while they focus on some of the corridors, uh, in the meantime. Next. So now the one that you're probably interested here, which is the Northeast Corridor. And I'm happy to say that it's also the one that's most likely to be implemented next, after the South Corridor. And that's because the tracks are already there. The idea here is to use those same tracks that Brightline currently runs on. I know you're all familiar with Brightline. Brightline's great, but it doesn't service all the communities in Miami-Dade County between Aventura and Miami Central. And it's also at a price point where most people can't afford it, certainly not for your daily commute. So the idea is to complement the existing Brightline service with a commuter rail service, something more akin to Tri-Rail. And in fact, Tri-Rail may end up operating it. We, uh, we still don't know. Uh, and it will have an additional three to four stations in between Aventura and downtown, with the closest one here being at one hundred and twenty-fifth Street. Um, so the good news here is the funding seems to have been cobbled together. We're providing the local match. The state, uh, has committed state dollars, and the Biden administration had committed four hundred million dollars. Now, we have another administration. Uh, we hope they're gonna honor that commitment, and then ultimately it still needs to pass Congress, but we're optimistic that that will happen. Next. North Corridor is the final one, and that is slated to be, this is the one corridor that's slated to be Metro Rail, connecting from the existing MLK Station, North Twenty-seventh Avenue to, to the Broward County Line. Uh, now, truthfully, because this is proposed to be Metro Rail, it's gonna be the hardest to achieve, because it's by far the most expensive. And it could only be achieved with strong federal participation. I mean, we need the, for the feds to pay for over half of this. And quite honestly, I, I just don't know that that's gonna happen, um, given the new realities. Next. Uh, we have also invested in park and ride facilities throughout the county, mostly out west and down south, so I won't spend time on that. Next. In order to pay for all this, you know, we need to look under every rock. I'm sorry to make you so hungry at this time of night. There are sandwiches here. Um, but, uh, we call it a funding lasagna, right? We need layers and layers and layers and layers of funding in order to actually pay for all these very expensive projects. What we have today isn't enough. So we're always exploring additional things like special assessment districts and whatnot. Next. Other focus, other areas of focus for us, first-last-mile solutions. You can build all these corridors, and no one will use them if they don't connect to the communities they serve. So making sure that people can get to those stations from their communities, and once they reach their destination, get. get to the final destination, whether it be a place of work, a school, or whatnot. And that's what we call first-last mile, whether that's bicycle pedestrian paths, whether that's freebies, whether that's, you know, circulators. You know, it's something that's a really important part of the, the network that people sometimes forget about. Enhancing county municipal connectivity. I like to say we don't have one transit system in Miami. We have thirty-six. We have Miami-Dade Transit, we have Tri-Rail, we have Bright Line, and then we have thirty-three cities, you know, each running their own little transit things. And that doesn't always work for the end user, right, who just wants to get from point A to point B as easily and seamlessly as possible. That's sometimes difficult with all these systems that don't always talk to each other or connect well. So we're constantly encouraging the county and the cities to connect their systems, both physically and then also technologically via one central app. Improving the customer experience, you can build everything you want. If it's not well-maintained, if it's not clean, if it's not safe, it does, if it doesn't perform well, people won't use it. They won't get out of their cars. So we're constantly on the county about making sure that the, the customer experience is first and foremost. And finally, community engagement. Uh, I'm a big believer in informing the public about what's being done with their tax money. Um, I don't think you hear this presentation very often. In fact, the last time I was here was pre-pandemic, so I apologize for that. But, you know, I am out in the community now giving this presentation to anyone who'll, who'll have me. All the cities, civic associations, chambers, you name it. Uh, next. One of the programs that we launched recently was the CITT Ambassador Program. So if you currently ride transit or even the city's Freebie on a regular basis, you can apply to be an ambassador for us. You're essentially our eyes and ears on the system. You will get a daily survey on an app. You fill out that survey, you get points in exchange for doing that, and you can exchange those points for rewards. Free Uber uh passes, free uh city bike passes, free, uh hopefully in the near future, free discounted transit rides. So please apply if you're interested, MiamiDade.gov/cit. And finally, um, a couple of years ago, I also launched a podcast, because that's what you do now, right? And so this one is focused on transportation. It's called Mobility Matters, and, you know, we just don't hear about transportation enough. Uh, so, you know, I bring on a variety of guests, agency officials, elected officials, regular transit riders, whoever uh to be on the show, and we talk about transportation and other issues that intersect with it. Land use, economic development, housing, you name it. So I would like to invite all of you, if you're interested, to be on my podcast. It's every other Thursday on Facebook Live from nine to ten AM. Um, and my guests this uh Thursday are going to be the property appraiser, Tomas Regalado, and uh someone from Parks and Rec to talk about the Ludlum Trail. That is the end of my presentation. I apologize for its length, um but I am happy to answer any questions you may have. I know that lasagna made you hungry, and you want to go straight to dinner.
It's a good presentation, and I was glad, and hopefully we can have this a lot more. I think it's all educated. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from anyone?
I just want to say, uh, thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your time. Uh, the Northeast Corridor project definitely seems like something this community could really benefit from, from. So we're excited for it. I hope to uh hear good things in the near future, and, and if you keep us updated, it'd be great.
Yeah, say your prayers. I really want that one to happen.
Thank you so much. Did you say this was in the making for twenty years or so? Did I hear right?
The tax has been collected for over twenty years since two thousand and two, but frankly, a lot of these promises were made even before then. I mean, people have been talking about the North Corridor and Bay Link for, for decades. We just never had the funding in place to make it happen. And even now with the half penny, we're still limited in how much we can do. Frankly, it was a penny's worth of promises, but politically, they cut it to a half penny, and it was just never enough, even from the beginning, to pay for everything that was, you know, promised to the voters. So we're doing the best we can with the money we have. Um, we need to explore more funding options.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bettencourt. Appreciate your time, and uh anything that can get cars off our streets is much appreciated. Absolutely.
Right here, thank you for being here tonight. I, I know you have a busy, busy schedule, but thank you for taking time out to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
And thank you for your staff for taking my phone calls and late in the evening and answering my emails. Thank you very much.
Our, our pleasure, and again, thank you to the administration. They've been very responsive. Uh, you know, they're a joy to work with. So thank you. All right, so we have a presentation from the Parks and Rec Department.
Good evening, good evening. Uh, good evening, Mayor. Well, Mayor, not here today, but Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Village Manager, Staff, Residents, Guest. I am Issa Thornell, the Parks and Rec Director. I'm here to do a presentation about our department, um the ins and outs, uh make it informative and kind of just get you updated of where we are, what we're working on, um some of our goals and, and some of the things we do that you might not know. Slide, please. There we go. Uh, so this is what we're going to talk about, my plans for this presentation. Um, what is Parks and Rec? It encompasses a lot, but um can really kind of break it down simply. Um, we're going to go over operation hours, our current staff, past staff, um current programming, some past programming. We'll dive into goals, department goals, um revenue, special events, community engagement. And then we will end with um what we're on the clock for. And it's time for some upgrades and some maintenance plans that the department is now establishing going forward. Slide, please, Madam Clerk. You might have to hit it twice for me. Um, what is Parks and Rec? Parks, the purpose of Parks and Recreation is to provide public spaces and recreational activities for people of all ages to enjoy leisure time, promote physical health, foster community engagement, and enhance the quality of life within the community by managing parks, trails, playgrounds, other outdoor facilities, often including organized programs like sports leagues, arts classes, and nature education. Uh, that's the longest wordy slide I promise you I have in this presentation. Um, Parks and Rec is meant to be fun and engaging, so this is where we're going to stop with that and kind of move forward. And I'll be doing most of the talking. We'll have some pictures that will kind of describe what I'm talking about. But that's the overall goal of Parks and Rec. Uh, I am a member of the Florida Parks and Recreation Association. I, I, I attend that conference every year. And now working on getting um my accreditation for the National Parks and Recreation Association. So we're constantly trying to connect with larger communities and communities as our same size to figure out how we can fix problems, grow, and strengthen our department, and um also strengthen our connection with the community. Slide, please. So community benefits. Parks and Recreation have three values that make them essential services to communities. Economic value, um parks improve local tax base and increase property values. Um, I often bump into real estate people in this community who say this is one of their selling points when driving um people through. This is our Ed Burke Park Field that you see on the picture if you're not familiar. Um, Texas A&amp;M did a review of twenty-five studies investigating whether parks in open space contributed positively to property values. Twenty out of those twenty-five found that property values um grew higher. The real estate market consistently demonstrated that people are willing to pay a large amount for property located close to parks and open spaces, um areas that, for their home, then don't offer this amenity. So this is a huge selling part, point for our community. It's um a huge open space. We often see people just sitting in the middle of the field, kind of enjoying this space because from here, how, how far do you have to go to get something um as open and air and the grass? Um, just to enjoy a moment um in the busy streets of, of South Florida now. Um, number two, health and environmental benefits. Parks are places that people go to get healthy and stay fit. Um, just a visit to our park at any time of the day, from sunrise to sunset, you'll see people walking, working out, um kids engaged in sports activities, families engaging together in activities. Um, and so it's a beautiful thing to see. Um, Parks and Recreation Programs and Services contribute to health of children, young adults, and seniors. Social importance, number three. Parks are tangible rec, uh reflection of the quality of life in the community. They provide identity for citizens and are a major factor in perception of quality of life in a given community. Parks and Recreation Services are often cited as one of the most important factors in surveys of how livable communities are. So we take a lot of pride in our park. I know all of our residents do. Um, we've come a long way from the years I've been here quite a while, so I've seen the growth and the transition of this park um from the amenities we offer, the programs we offer, um and the things we've doing, we do on a daily basis for the upkeep. Um, we really do get a lot of foot traffic. Um, it might not seem like a lot for the small community that we are, but we're basically one of the largest parks in this area. One Twenty-Fifth North Miami just finally opened that playground that had been closed since the pandemic. Um, uh did a complete refurbishing of that, but besides that park there, Miami Shores, which is technically um a private community park. Um, we are a major park for unincorporated Dade, which is neighboring us, North Miami, which is neighboring us, unincorporated Dade across the tracks, um which is neighboring us. So um though they aren't residents, these are people who are actually a part of our community because they see this park as theirs. Um, so it's very important that, that we understand that. Next slide, please. Hours of operation. So we are a seven days a week department. We are open Monday through Saturday from nine AM to six PM. Starting this weekend, we'll extend that time to seven. Um, Sundays, we are open unlike a lot of parks. Uh, we are open from noon to five on Sundays. Again, with the time change this weekend, we'll extend that time to six PM. Park grounds are open to the public from sunrise to sunset. So this is the part of the presentation where I sneak in some rules that have been kind of being broken lately. Um, and my, my opportunity to reach out to the public. So we close at dark. The park ground should be cleared by dark. And working with all departments, we are, are working on that, but for the safety of the people visiting um and for the respect of the neighbors who live in close proximity of the park, park grounds do close at sunset. Um, there are signs there posted. Um, you see the "Did You Know"? Walking around the park, the only sidewalk that exists in the city limits. Um, it goes around the park. Walking around that park three times will get you one mile on your steps. So that's an interesting fact to know. By ordinance, dogs are not allowed on park grounds. Um, this is a big thing and a huge thing. Also, there's a leash law throughout the community, throughout the county um to keeping your dogs on, on a leash. So we just want to keep everyone safe. Um, and I know people, we go through it all the time enforcing this rule. This is not a rule. This is actually an ordinance. Um, I tell them all the time, so it's law. Um, I'm not just being mean. We love our dogs, but we also want to keep our park clean. We have dog stations around the walkways. I see people drive to the park just to walk the community, just to walk their dog around the community. It might start at the park and walk through our streets, um and end back at the park and take their, their furry friends home. Or they might just come there to walk and exercise. Um, it's a beautiful thing, but we also want to keep the grounds clean so dogs aren't allowed, especially in our playground areas, um and/or off a leash. We have kids there at all times of day, and we know little ones, they will quickly go um to pet a dog that they don't even know and find out the hard way that that's not always a great thing. Um, so slide, please. Staff over the years. So this is a transition that we'll see. So the first graph you see is, I'm sorry, small print, but I'll break it down for you. The first graph to the far left, nineteen ninety-five till about two thousand and five, that orange bar is full-time staff. We are about five full-time staff. The middle light green bar is part-time staff. We're about seventeen part-time staff. And we had about two or three contracted programs at the time. In two thousand and five, there was a huge shift where the department was basically dismantled. Rough times in the nation, we understand what that, those times were. The shift then was now to look to outsource that, this department. So we went down to one full-time staff, uh about four part-time staff. You see about fifteen to sixteen contracted staff. So what we did, all of our programs now are contracted out to independent contractors, the office of our yoga programs. We'll get into those programs later, but I just wanted to see these transitions. So sometimes people think this department is so small, but part of my responsibility as, as a director is to uphold those contractors to the standards of the, first, the contract they signed, and also the standards that we look to uphold as employees of this village. So now we're at one full-time staff, that's I, the three part-time staffers, and about seventeen contracted programmers. Now, we don't have seventeen programmers. Our soccer program has about six coaches. I'm adding those in there. We have about three, uh two different yoga programs, so we'll get into that. But under all of our contracted programs, we have about seventeen employees there. So as a director, it is still my job to make sure that they're doing their job and upholding the contract they signed with the village. Next slide, please. So these are our current programs. Uh, we have music classes for children. We have a beach tennis program. Um, Golden Gates does our aftercare program. They also do our spring break camp, our summer camp. We have two yoga programs, two separate yoga programs, and we kind of encompass all skill levels. Um, we have a soccer program. It is our soccer program. It is not the Shore Soccer Program. The company that runs this program, they also do soccer programs in Aventure, um North Miami Beach. They run our program. They also do do the Shore Soccer Program. The, the president of that program is from Miami Shores. He named his company Shore Soccer. He's, he's fifteen years deep. It's a little late to change that title. So we also have a youth tennis program where we set up a court. Um, this is for small children. You'll see the little, little ones at the racquetball court. Sometimes you'll see the slightly older ones on our basketball court utilizing the lines on the court. We pop, do a pop-up net. Um, interesting facts about this, three of our programs are run by residents. It's a beautiful thing. They take pride in their programs. They stick with us. They understand that it's going to take time to build these programs. Uh, we also have two of our programs, or three of our programs, which have been here over ten years. Two of our programs are in their first year. Um, some of the limits and challenges we get is being a small community and limited space, limited field. Um, is that we can't compete with the bigger parks. So what we try to do is get creative, come up with programs that may be starter programs or feeder programs for the bigger community programs. Um, I, I run the, the only in-house program we have is the flag football program, which we do um from October to December every year. That's the in-house program that I do on Saturday mornings. It is a starter program. It's for kids who might not have played any sports before. But it gives them two hours to, they learn how to catch. They learn that we've had children from the commission in this program. I've had many, many resident uh children come to this program, and they go on to either play or not play. But that's what we're there for. We teach them more about the core values of sports, athletics, um and teamwork. So we take a lot of pride in these programs because we know it's not easy to keep these programs going. Sometimes they start with one or two participants um and grow into great productive programs. Sometimes they fizzle out faster than we can keep them. We've had Silver Sneakers that didn't work because every gem around us offers Silver Sneakers for free. We couldn't compete with those prices. Uh, we don't have workout equipment. We're a little limited. In the works now, was hoping to bring this, the Pilates Contract, which is another resident um that, that will hopefully be in front of you next month to, to get approved. She actually signed the contract today. A bootcamp class, which will take us outdoors and expand our programming a little more outdoors for adults, and some dance classes. Uh, right, the foundation is also, is actually going to have a teaser class next month. Salsa for adults, a one-night thing, to see if it's something that the community wants to engage in and keep going. And we'll look to maybe tie in a contract with that studio. Uh, slide, please. Goals. Uh, hit it one more time for me, please, Madam Clerk. Where it starts. You'll probably have to hit it one more time for me, but um to preserve, protect, maintain, improve, and enhance our parks and recreational facilities and programs. Um, that's our main top goal, and with that goal comes planning. And that is something I am working diligently on now, is to incorporate more structure, more planning, um things that are in writing that we can be held accountable for. Um, I'm a long-term employee, uh, and some of the things are just so routine to me because I've been here so long. It's very easy for it, for me to not see the need to put it in writing. Again, I am the only full-time employee in this department. Um, so we wear a lot of hats, all of the staff in this village does. Um, and so we, we get in our routine and we're locked in. The next goal for us is to enrich the lives of residents through our programming, through our community events, through everything we do. This is our goal. We want you to have a place that you know that you can go to, whether it's just to have your child's birthday party, to uh get together with friends, to engage at community events. Um, then we have one more, is to build a healthier community. And that again is bringing programming and opportunities for all ages to utilize the park, to get healthy, to put the devices down, uh to cut off the video games for our, our young ones. But I think even as adults, we find ourselves connected to this phone sometimes. And so this is a place that we want you to be able to detach and come, even with, we've had to adapt with, we have screens all through the rec center that have the flyers. Um, and they're constantly moving and updating people of what we have coming. And we noticed people just won't stop at the bulletin boards and, and read anymore. As we notice, people just won't stop at the bulletin boards and, and read anymore. Everybody's moving so fast and going, moving so fast. So now these TVs, they, they, the blinking, the changing, the constant movement of those things seems to engage people. And so we're using everything we can to let them know about all the opportunities we have at the park. Slide please. Revenue. So parks and recreation is something we don't focus on, they talk about this at conferences all the time. We know it's a big, it's a big item always in municipality, but revenue isn't something we try to put the focus on with the thing, the services we are trying to offer. That being said, if you see the bottom year, I'm gonna try to do a breakdown for you, that bottom year was, what, twenty twenty-one? End of the pandemic. Green and orange represent our rental fees, this is for parties, we do all of our renting out, so all of our open spaces that are rentable. The other one is for our programming, orange is programming, green is rentals. Obviously, twenty twenty-one, huge drop-off. Twenty twenty-two, we lost four of our programs due to the pandemic, people had to go and get jobs. My Zumba instructor is now a teacher, she never taught Zumba again after, after the pandemic. It's horrible, but that's what we remember from those times, that we lost a lot of our instructors who did these wonderful jobs and now they had to go find jobs that were more tangible to the times. So you can see the, the, the steady flow that we get from definitely our programming and also the rentals, which every, every weekend this month, we have a rental on Saturday and Sunday booked already, we're locked in. We, we are a hot commodity pavilion, the tot lot, field rentals. So all of our open spaces are constantly, constantly in that's revenue that comes in, it's always done within operational hours. If they do outside of operational hours, it's an additional fee, but again, park grounds close at dark, so all the parties and rentals close at dark. We do rent inside as well for some events. The green that you see on the top was twenty twenty-four, that was the projected revenue of both of those items. So in twenty twenty-four this year, we brought in roughly about thirty-two, thirty-two thousand seven hundred dollars with rentals and programming fees. So my silver lining here is we budgeted about thirty-five dollars for community events. I look at if this revenue can wash the community events, will we invest in our community events for a year? I feel like we're doing a, a great service for the community because those community events, as we'll talk about shortly, are one of the pillars of our community. Slide please. Our special events. We, this is, some of these events are signature events and all of our residents, knowing anyone who's been in any of the events, know that our Halloween event, Winterfest event and egg hunt, get talked about for neighborhoods over. Halloween is probably our largest event now. Last year, I think we exceeded any prior year before. We transitioned from an indoor event in Halloween after the pandemic to an outdoor event and it's only grown from there. Not only do people come here because they love the event, they also come here because the village, they feel safe. This is somewhere that people have been coming for years. I see people every year who have came as children, they're now bringing their kids to this event, whether they live in Biscayne Park or not. Our board also in other departments put on other event, events that are head of the rec center. Some of our boards are now doing events that will be held here, we have an artesian market that's held, will be held outside this weekend. I love the fact that they're now incorporating these different pockets of the village. It's a beautiful thing, it's the smaller, more quaint events, but all of our medians are, in my eyes, considered small pocket parks. We hope in the future to grow some of these medians, not to do anything big that draws a lot of traffic, but to somehow tie these medians into our park to create kind of a park system within our city limits. Slide please, I have some step, some stats here, but let's move on till we can, feel free to hit the Grammy music if you need to. Community engagement. Can't see those numbers, but, but between the Instagram and Facebook, over the last two years, we've grown, our following has almost doubled. Super important, again, in this day and time when everybody's connected by their phones to help us get the word out from not only our special events and our programming, but to emergencies and anything happening important in the village. Obviously, we also use Nextdoor. We count our guests. So a few years ago, I incorporated a system of hourly counting where staff is, has to get outside, walk around, we count adults and children in every area of the park, all of our high-traffic areas. So from eleven to close every day, we track this by hand, adults, children are in the playground, on the field, this helps us see our high-traffic times, times that we may need to incorporate more staff. Also, it helps us track the, the foot traffic that is in, in these areas and see, hey, this area is getting a lot of traffic, what can we do to spruce it up, make it even more inviting? Or, hey, let's pay close attention to this area, it's getting a lot of traffic lately, we may need to do some, keep an eye on equipment and make sure for safety issues. So I, I've really taken pride in this, in this people count. Often, it also enforces staff and myself to engage with the people outside. Also makes enforcing rules so much more easier, when they see you walking around, they, they definitely understand that people are here, that we have an eye out, we're here to help, we're here to answer questions, to give you more information about programming and then just engaging with, with our everyday visitors. You see, we have our plant swap there, which was donated by a former commissioner, the newly-installed bike equipment rack here was an Eagle Scout project, completely paid for by the Eagle Scout, helped, put in by our Public Works Department, but another one of these community service and community engagement things I really pride myself on, completely free to the, the city, we paid for, I think, six bags of concrete. Other than that, it was completely paid for. The three bulletin boards that surround the Parks and Rec Center outside, also another Eagle Scout project, completely paid for, public, by the Eagle Scout theirself, they have to raise all of the money and get their friends and family to help engage to install it. We're there to assist to make sure things are put in properly, but otherwise, again, another free commodity that we got just by engaging with the community. Me and the manager spoke with another Eagle Scout perspective last week, he wants to put a small library box in the tot lot. Another wonderful idea, we already have the library inside, but to have that book out access right there in the tot lot is something we love. Butterfly Garden on Tenth Avenue was originally an Eagle Scout project, was just refurbished again by another Eagle Scout project. So definitely that community engagement is always beneficial and it gets, helps us get things done and sometimes they think out the box and, and bring ideas that I haven't even thought about, or sometimes they ask what our needs are and if it's something that we haven't budgeted for, but we can get it done, we'll get it done. Next slide, please. Marty Rubin, parks and playgrounds are the soul of a city. The picture to your left is our playground and twenty-two years ago, the picture to the right is our current playground structure. Slide please, I say all that to say. We're on the clock with this playground. This is one of those stats you, you hate incorporating, but at the same time, it, it needs to be said. According to the American Academy of Orthopedic Surgeons, more than two hundred and twenty thousand children under the age of fourteen are treated for playground injuries in emergency rooms each year. Just last week roughly, thanks to our people count, we had approximately a hundred sixty-five children visited the tot lot, approximately three hundred and eighteen children visited our secondary playground and it rained all of Tuesday, so that's a wash day. So out of six days last week, those were, those were basically our rough numbers. As a department, as a village, and obviously I know the, we've had talks with the commission, we are definitely on the right path in regards to our frame of mind and understanding where we are. And for the community that doesn't know, we are, we are currently exploring funding options from the Firdapp Grant and other grant possibilities to make sure we can make the proper upgrades we need to keep our, our children safe at these playgrounds. Madam Clerk, if you could hit the slide into space for me one more time. Safe playground, so huge thing, supervision obviously is always a big thing. And just to reiterate with the public, we, we as staff, we aren't there to supervise children, you'd be amazed how many times I have to get parents off their phone or parents out of their car to come watch their child on the playground. We've recently put up signage on the tot lot playground that says children aren't allowed without an adult. We've also incorporated a rule for inside that children aren't allowed without an adult. I'm one of the big components of not having to oversign and put a, a sign for this, a sign for that, a sign for this, because they will always say, well, it wasn't assigned there. You have a sign for everything else, why wasn't it a sign there that I can't climb on top of the purple slide that's twelve feet tall? Because, right, we know that you shouldn't do that, but without the supervision and the help of parents and guardians, we can't properly supervise. You see the other aspects there that, that we're working on? Obviously, equipment maintenance is a huge thing incorporated in our hourly walkarounds. Every two weeks, we do a safety inspection of the playgrounds, there's the checklist. Some things are rushes, we have to close off playground equipment if they're immediate danger, some things we are marking off, mark off, but the timeline for replacement equipment is usually three months. So our goal now is to continue to pursue these possibilities of funding for complete renovations of both playgrounds. Slide please, Madam Clerk. I'll make this very quick, grounds updates, this is some of the maintenance upgrade plans I'm starting to incorporate for all our high-traffic areas, is just doing a complete breakdown fiscally of the financial impact it takes to upgrade, maintain, and then again, to make the proper changes that we need to for safety and aesthetic purposes going forward. I will present this at a later date, but this will be for all of our high-traffic areas and it'll be something that can be continued on whether I'm here or not. Again, this is a beautiful mirror on the side of our racquetball court, if you aren't familiar, Village Biscayne Park is a bird sanctuary. I am Issa Tornell, Parks and Rec Department, any questions, please?
Thank you, Issa. Any questions from anybody?
Thank you, Issa, so much, I have a few. So on all these programs, do we have a percentage of the programs there are first come to Biscayne Park residents? You know how Miami Shores does that you have to be a resident, you get a special discount? I know we have those programs set up in terms of that financially, is that also in terms of availability?
So not really, I think the only program where that would even come into play, obviously, would be our soccer program. I think no other-
I'm not saying it has to be, I'm just wondering-
Right, right. No other program, I think, is pushing anyone away at this time of actually trying to get more people to register. So, but there are incentives financially, you're absolutely correct there, but there isn't a priority set on the, I guess that priority is just that financial discount that is offered to residents.
Yeah.
Going forward, absolutely, that's something when we incorporate any other programs that are gonna be larger on the scale of that, that's something we will definitely take into consideration.
And from all of this, you said, I mean, the graphs on increased revenue coming from the park, it's remarkable, if you put it twenty twenty-one first versus what's now, obviously come after COVID, that would be a reality. Are we at full capacity in terms of rentals? Do you think from all our spaces, so there's revenue coming and I know, it might not be our mainstream for revenue for the village, but are you eighty percent capacity, ninety percent? If we had an additional area for rental, would that bring more? And that's what I'm trying to understand, so where are we?
With the rentals, right now, we limit rentals to one a day, just because the impact it has on the park and on the seating. So usually the rentable areas are, we leave the, the one area by the basketball court, which is covered seating, that's not rentable, because we want people to have somewhere shaded to sit, we, we can't rent out everything. We keep a minimum of fifty people per rental, that ensures we can never gauge the exact traffic of what, who's gonna be out on a Saturday and Sunday, we also only do rentals on weekends. So we've already, we've set some parameters into regards, so I know that limits the revenue a little bit, but it also, it's what, what we want to limit because the traffic, we can only contain so much. Parking obviously is a huge issue now that we're discussing, so right now, that's the limitation, the only limitations we have. I think the picnic area, which was the corner area on the northwest side of the park, used to have a pit there that used to be a rentable area, so that was one of the pictures I have there. My goal is to bring that area back up, we lost that huge tree that shaded that area. The goal there is to now make that a new rentable area, a little more natri in there, but it doesn't have the, people want the pavilion, you know, once we get to this time of year, you need the, it's South Florida, you need the pavilion, not only for the sun, but from the rain as well. So I think right now, the only other option would be, I know we had a rental recently here on the one-fourteenth median, or incorporating some of these other parks, but I know there's also limitations there, nobody wants a large party in front of their house.
Now, being which is the, the main source of revenue, it wasn't just the intention either, but to understand if there is potential for more, but to your point, the experience is what people, you know, come to the, to the park and it's not too crowded, it's, it's the perfect balance between paid events, you know, and they have to reserve the spot and just come in freely and still have a chance to play ball. That's it, thank you.
Anybody else?
I just wanna say, Issa, thank you for your presentation, it was great. I wanna say thank you for your diligent, hard work over all these years. I heard, is this your, how many years in the village?
I was hired in, in nineteen ninety-five, so this would technically be thirty years, I was gone for three years from twenty fourteen to twenty seventeen, but yes.
Well, congrats, thirtieth year here in the village, Issa, that's a huge accomplishment and I just wanna say thank you for your diligent, hard work. Your facility is loved, it's well-used, it's evident, and I, I think the commission would all agree with me that we have intention to see investments put in that, that facility with improvements to our, our field, to our parking, to our, hopefully our playgrounds with this application this summer. I just wanna say thank you again for a, a facility that our residents truly cherish and we need to protect it and, and improve it for them.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I concur. I just wanted to also add that, you know, I've been here ten years now and served for four years on this commission and now I've gotten myself into another four, but on a serious note, your department has been the best and most consistent over all the years that I've been here and I, you know, it's because of you, let's be frank, it's not because of anybody else.
Appreciate that.
So thank you for all you do for this village, it's, it's really appreciated and, and, and we notice it, thank you.
Thank you.
So Issa, I won't let you walk away without letting you know that he's, he's an outstanding employee, Vice Mayor, as, as you just said, he goes above and beyond every day and, and he's done it all on a shoestring budget and he never complains about anything and he's helping us out now with our CITT program and he, and he's jumped in, you know, and taken over that, that, that project and he's helped out myself and the village just tremendously. And he reminds me every day that it was my wife that hired him. She brought him here and she, she makes some good choices in her life and he's one of them, so thank you, Issa, for all you do for the village.
Thank you. Thank her, thank, thank her for me, too.
Okay, so we're moving along to public comments. We have a lot of folks that are gonna talk this evening, I'm presuming, so we have a three-minute rule and we're going to adhere and be strict about that three minutes so that everybody has an opportunity to speak. So if you'd like to talk, please make sure that you say your name and, and your address for the record and we're gonna go with the, who's here in the log cabin first and then we'll shoot on over to Zoom. Was there something that you wanted to say?
And actually, since this is probably, I mean, this is important subject matter, that I think that if we can just extend the three minutes, because I mean, it's very important. What happens is I don't want people talking fast and not getting to the point, it's not just to talk, there's a reason why everybody's here and I like to have it really be extended the courtesy of, within reason, I'm not saying somebody to talk for ten, fifteen minutes, but I think we need to extend it, because I like to hear everything that these people have to say.
That's up to the rest of the board, so I, I, I'm good with the three minutes if you guys want to allow longer comments.
Three minutes is our agreed upon, that's what we've always done, that's how our rules are and I wouldn't wanna change it from this meeting to the next, to the next, it's three minutes.
I'm with you.
Those three minutes, everyone has three minutes. Again, state your name and your address for the record, please, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners and residents, Mark Steele, my address is protected under statute one-one-nine. I am here to explain my circumstances led to my decision to step down as chief of police for the Village of Biscayne Park Police Department. This was not a decision I- This was not a decision I lightly made, but it was one I felt was necessary to do so with the experience of the hostile work environment that was created by Albert Childress. I also want to share my concerns about certain actions that I personally observed that in my view raised serious ethical and legal concerns and questions. When my team and I took over the Biscayne Park Police Department, it was struggling with the aftermath of years of corruption and mismanagement, particularly under Ray Estesiano and then followed by the previous administration. The department was plagued with misconduct, lack of accountability, and a culture that seemed to put out personal agendas above the public service. Our enforcement, in short period, was able to make significant progress through the reforms and aim to increase the transparency focusing, focusing on the service of the community with honor and fairness. However, as time went on, I personally observed and what I truly believe were efforts to, uh, for the department to be undermined by Childress. Based on the observations, I believe that the actions and directives raise serious concerns about the proper use of public office. I felt pressure to comply with instructions that in my opinion were unethical and potentially unlawful. This included what I perceived to be attempts to interfere with ongoing criminal investigations. The use of sensitive information for personal and political gain and the target of employees for personal grievances rather than legitimate causes. I personally observed what I truly believe that Mr. Childress used police assets for personal gain and ordered unethical and unlawful orders. In my views, these actions not only conflicted with the proper law enforcement procedures, but also compromised the integrity of our department. I was especially troubled at the directives that seemed to be involved with a constant threats and sharing sensitive information about investigations without a clear and lawful cause. When I refused to comply with the experience that I perceived significant increased hostility from Childress, creating an environment that I found impossible to continue to serve in an effective and ethical manner. I also want to clarify that I've reported these concerns to both of the Florida Department of Law Enforcement and the Commission in good faith, seeking for a thorough and unbiased investigation. My decisions to step down was influenced by the fact that after coming forward with these whistleblower concerns, I felt no support, no reasonable accommodations or protections from this commission. And that just reinforced my decision to step down. It is puzzling that an interim position can cause in a short period of time so much grief and compromise to an ethical department. This has caused so much harm in a short period of time and no one in the commission has thought to suspend Mr. Childress until the internal and criminal investigations are complete. As I leave this position, I do with a heavy heart, but my integrity is intact. I hope is that my resignation is a wake-up call to this community and this commission that deserves better leaders who act with honor, transparency, and accountability unlike Childress. The Bible says in Proverbs 11:3, "The integrity to uphold guides them, and the unfaithful are destroyed by duplicacy." Let us remember that integrity is not a virtue. It is a foundation of just leadership. No administration can stand. I'll be happy to share some evidence and other stuff with the people after this commission meeting. Thank you.
That sounded problematic. Um, can we do this together? Is that okay?
Can you do it together?
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as you both talk. Try to be quick.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, hi, my name is Michael Eva and this is my wife Melanie. Uh, we live at 590 Northeast 121st Street. Uh, we're both big environmental activists and we moved to Biscayne Park in 2015 because we thought it was uh, different than other Miami neighborhoods. Uh, it's known to be more progressive and more eco-conscious than most of the rest. There's diversity in the tree canopy and the wildlife around, and it's a bird sanctuary. As noted by the beautiful uh, mural on the side of our racket ball court. Uh, so over the years, uh, we've enjoyed living alongside all types of wildlife, including the formerly endangered yellow-crowned night herons, uh, who our neighbor Vicky and April first pointed out to us years ago. Together with our North Miami neighbors, we've watched them nest every year in the Australian pines in our medians. And uh, sometimes the babies even visit our yard in search of insects as our yard is free of pesticides. Their nesting trees on 121st include one of our uh, next door neighbors, Vicky's house and several on the west side of Fifth Avenue. They choose the same branches every year for their nests.
On Thursday, February 20, 20th, around 8:00 AM, I was out for a walk and saw an adult heron on a line in front of my neighbor's house in front of their usual nesting tree, warning me not to get closer to the tree. I knew why. As they do every time this year, they had built a nest. I had been hearing their distinctive calls all week.
So just before 11:00 AM that same day, while I was on a work call, I saw people starting to cut the trees out front. Now, at first I thought it's the usual FPL nonsense. And we were, as we weren't really given notice that uh, the Australian pines would be touched on 121st Street. So the letter sent out to residents only mentioned 111th to 119th Streets. When it comes to speedings and accidents like just happened in front of our house this evening, right before we came here, on or near our street, we've been told that it's difficult to make any kind of changes to our roads since we border North Miami and share 121st Street with them. So we thought, well, apparently this isn't going to apply to us because this tree project will span the two communities. And our trees therefore would likely remain untouched.
So after Mike alerted me, I went outside and to my surprise, it was Joe's Tree Service starting to cut down the tree where we've watched yellow-crowned night herons nest for years. They had already removed the branches where the birds nest each year. Thinking back to the letters sent to residents by the village manager about the other streets, I knew the trees were supposed to be inspected for wildlife and would be bypassed if wildlife was found. So my neighbor Vicky and I begged Joe's and the interim village manager to stop cutting. The displaced heron couple watched from a nearby tree as their nesting tree was being cut. The tree came down that day and its remains were piled on top of several native cocoa plums, which the people on our street had advocated for and had a role in choosing several years ago, which are still growing. After showing the village manager more herons and nests west of Fifth Avenue and after much discussion, he agreed to postpone the cutting of the pines on that side of our street until they were inspected by a wildlife expert like Pelican Harbor. We later found out that this was supposed to have happened before each tree was cut down, as recorded in previous meeting minutes, but it did not. Had Pelican Harbor been contacted, they would have advised that it's nesting season.
All right, guys. Six minutes is up. If-
Three minutes.
I'll try to hurry. Sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
We learned that our other neighbors have been watching the same species nest in trees every year on 119th and 6th and 121st and 8th. Those trees are now gone. It's nesting season and we have failed the birds and our other wildlife and failed our own ordinance as a bird sanctuary. Mistakes happen when we're moving too fast and unfortunately our wildlife suffers for it. We have to do better. In an email response to Commissioner Huntington later that day after the trees, the tree was cut on our street, Tropical Audubon Society stated, "The yellow-crowned night heron is protected under the migratory bird treaty act. So during the nesting season, now through July, you shouldn't remove any tree with active nest or any trees in close proximity to a tree with active nests, nor should you attempt to relocate or disturb any of the birds or nests."
So as we no longer have the opportunity to remove the Australian pines and phases, which would have offered some relief to our wildlife, uh, we do suggest that we as a village do our due diligence in carefully selecting replacement trees and find new ways to protect our birds. In our opinion, replacing, replacement trees should be of several different native species that can serve as wildlife habitat, offer shade, and offer privacy. In the meantime, we need barriers in the medians to both discourage parking and the use of our medians as thoroughfares.
New ways to, new ways to protect our birds could include banning the use of fireworks and switching to an integrated pest management system instead of using harmful pesticides in our public spaces, like in our park as the city of North Miami and Miami Shores have done. Thank you all so much.
I'm going to try to be respectful of your time. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, but I'm going to go over about 20 seconds, okay? For what it's worth, I'd like to share my perspective on your decision to destroy- Oh, I'm sorry. Doris Zeman, 11800 Griffin Boulevard. For what it's worth, I'd like to share my perspective on your decision to destroy all of our Australian pines. I'm a native of Miami and one of four generations who have lived and paid taxes here in the village. My family has been here over 50 years. Today just happens to be the day that Florida became the 27th state in the Union. March 3rd, 1845, or 180 years ago. That got me wondering, when was Miami incorporated? That year was 1896. This means those pines have been growing in our area almost as long as our first pioneers and more than half the time that Florida has been a state. One of the reasons my family decided to settle in this village was because of the uniqueness and the beauty of those towering pines that lined Griffin Boulevard and the C8 Canal, which was dredged in the late 1800s. Arthur Griffin actually featured our pines in his advertising for residency in this park. I asked Stephen Duncan, the expert from Miami Dade County, why our pines are considered bad trees and described to him the dozens of parrots that screeched from the treetops each and every morning. He said neither the pines nor the parrots are native. So this got me to wonder, how many non-native trees and birds have adapted here? The fact is that 55% of all tree species identified and 45% of all trees sampled in the South Florida area are non-native. As far as birds go, the recent compilation lists 196 non-native bird species, which includes 72 species of parrots and parakeets, 51 passerines, and 22 species of waterfowl. Based on these facts alone, the decision to destroy these trees has been rash and reckless. Did you ever consider trimming and pruning these trees? Basic tree maintenance. We do that in our homes. I don't recall in 50 years living here, ever, this ever being discussed or done. In 2004, a few of our village residents tried to stir a campaign to rid our pines, the village of our pines. The residents on Griffin Boulevard were having none of this talk. Then in 2022, Albert Dominguez from our Public Works Department called the county directly, saying that the pines were posing a threat. I would love to know who directed Mr. Dominguez to make that call because not a single resident I spoke to on Griffin wanted to lose these historic trees. I have shared a 50-year history with the pines in our village. Now to discuss the negatives that you cite about the trees. They are invasive. Not in Biscayne Park, they're not invasive. Iguanas are invasive. They're not multiplying and dividing these pine trees. They have not. I have not seen in 50 years any sea turtles nesting or any crocodiles nesting under these pines.
Sorry, I need you to wrap up.
We've had hundreds of tropical cyclones and many named storms in the past 100 years. And yes, we've had Australian pines that have blown over, but not any more than any large tree. We have been fortunate not to have had a major storm in years, but even if you are new to the area, we've all seen the total devastation from last summer storms that affected our west coast and even into the Carolinas. Why didn't you seemingly intelligent people choose to maintain and prune our trees? Are you all so shortsighted that you couldn't see the negative impact this would have on our residents, tree canopy, wildlife, and our property values? Or have you squandered our money and valuable resources because you simply do not care? Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi. My name is Susan Howell. I'm a resident of Miami Shores, 70 Northeast 121st Street. Uh, I'm a native, uh, plant pollinator gardener, a lover of wildlife. I've been in love with nature since I was a young girl. The-
I'm sorry. Just give me a moment. Excuse me. I think it's important, Albert, that we listen to this comment.
The, the um, yellow-crowned uh, herons were in the tree of one of my good friends in the neighborhood. So I, along with her, got to see them and their babies. And if you've never seen them, they are a sight you want to see. So I understand that Australian pines aren't native, but as the woman before said, many trees in Florida aren't native. And part of the problem with that is cities aren't requiring replacement trees to be native. So that's an underlying problem that all, including Miami Shores, needs to address. When a tree drops in my swale, I'm not required to replace it with a native tree. So there's underlying problems that need to be addressed. But when we come to the, to the birds, to go and cut down trees of nesting birds, that sounds like common sense that no one would do that in a community. And then to not tell some of the people that live here that it was going to happen. My friend went outside to find Joe's in her front yard and she said, but I don't know if there's babies in the nests. And she had to ask someone from Joe's, would they please check before they cut down the tree? That is not okay. We have the Audubon Society. We have Pelican Harbor Seabird Station. We have so many people in Miami that care about our wildlife. It is disappearing. We need pollinators. We need birds. We need to protect nature because if there is no nature, there's no us. They say you can get rid of worms and bees and the world will fall apart. You get rid of us, the world won't fall apart. We must protect nature.
Thank you.
I forgot my glasses. So bear with me. Okay. Hi, my name is Maria. My legally name is Maria Cesani Mollen. Uh, I live at 528 Northeast 121st Street. But everybody called me Vicky. I'm the one that they've been mentioning that the first time I saw the birds with my daughter. Anyways, um, I want you to read it so I don't become right away emotional. On the day that they knocked my door so I can move my car, I was shocked because two days before, I asked the city employee, what was the status of Northeast 121st Street? And he replied that nothing concrete because negotiations were taking place with North Miami because we shared the medium. That morning took me by surprise. I had to remove the cars and embrace something I was feared. The cutting on some amazing trees that have been protecting me and my family for the past 22 years. Those trees have been hosting the most amazing birds. They already mentioned what birds are. Second question. Between the-
Vicky, what's my, you wanna? They work.
A little.
Better?
Yeah. Um, amazing trees that have been protecting me and my family for the past 22 years. Those trees have been hosting the most amazing birds, especially watching with my daughter, the yellow-crowded herons coming every year to nest was an amazing experience. We documented the nest, the eggs, the parents feeding patterns. We knew that they were special and they were in danger. We saw the springs um, grow and pop their head out of the nest. We saw them learning how to fly. Every day we counted the babies. We named them. Of course, my daughter put all these names, characters' names and observed their behavior. By the way, my daughter is 26 now. And this is when she was younger, of course. We got worried in several storms when the branches were shaking and thought that we were going to lose them. But they were resilient. Then they were gone till the next year where they, where they were back right before the springtime. We felt special. Some way when inside the same trees, oh, the same way that inside the same, the same trees, we have bees. Those bees meant a lot to me because they belong to me. I rescued few beehives before the pandemic. But on September 2020, my house burned down. I'm the one, the house burned down. And before rebuilding my home, I relocated those- And before rebuilding my home, I relocated those bees.
We need you to wrap up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Those bees to be safe. Anyways, I just wanna, I'm going to stop reading and I just wanna say this. A hundred and twenty-first, and when I say I feel protected, I was sitting in there and I remember April was sixth. A police was hiding in my yard, looking for somebody in section eight across the street where shots starting to get fired. I was having a birthday party at my home and we went all down with all my, with all the kids down. If we didn't have those Australian pines, I don't even know. Now I'm thinking why I feel protected about those trees. This past Sunday, I had to call the police. Guess what? They parking in my space. We have three buildings, section eight in front of my house. They don't have place to park.
We need you to wrap up. I'm sorry.
Okay, great. You know, you have two presentations long as fact, and I'm sorry I'm going to say it, that put me to sleep. Okay, you want education about nature education? Start walking around and see birds and the trees because it's great. I'm a P E teacher and everything that you guys do for sports is great. But what you guys are doing on education, if you can even be a role model. Fix it. You break it. Fix it.
All right. Name and address, please, for the record.
Hello, my name is Adrian Rodriguez. My address is five twenty-three northeast one twenty-first street. I'm actually from North Miami, right across Biscayne Park. And I'm here talking on behalf of the herons, like all these neighbors. I've been living in the neighborhood for five years. And since I moved here, I've been watching the nests every year, like they say, exactly on the same branch. They come at the end of the winter. They are here for spring, summer, and they leave at the end of summer, around six, seven months. And right now they are nesting. They are about to lay eggs. I've been watching this since they came on the first of a rally here. I watch them every day with my son that is five years old. And the trees that they, where they are nesting, they are marked to be cut down. And I think like other people have say, you can find all the solutions for this. You know, we are the only species that actually can change the environment to live good and better. All the older species, they only do it to survive, you know, and to protect themselves from harm and to protect the, the, you know, the, the little ones. And this is exactly what they do. When the summer hits and the little birds, they are there. The mom stays in front of the sun all day through the morning or to the afternoon, and they move with the sun like this to protect it from the sun. I think you guys can do better than what you're doing to protect the birds and find all the solutions. Wait until the season is over, maybe to cut down the trees at the end of the summer, you know? They will have time next year, maybe to find another nesting place. And I think we have how you say? We, we own everything that we have to nature and Florida have been here for over a hundred years. We came with this rough environment and now when they come here, we kill them. We cut the trees where they live. And I think we, we can do something better. So I just came here unprepared. Someone told me this is here today and this is what I had to say. I hope you guys can help. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. I'm Jai Jai Lozano. My address is protected under chapter one one nine. I was recently retired as a captain for Biscayne Park Police Department after serving with distinction for over forty-four years in law enforcement. I'm here today to address a matter that great concern regarding the unjust circumstances surrounding my retirement. I was brought, it was brought to my attention that Albert Childress, as an interim manager, instructed George Rosero to terminate my employment because, according to his words, I looked at him the wrong way. That way, this clear example that Mr. Childress abused the power of, the abuse of power and misconduct. Throughout my career, I have held a high ethical standards in law enforcement. And it is a great disappointment that I'm find myself a subject to a such matter. On the Chief, Chief Mark Steele leadership, the Biscayne Park Police Department has undergone significant transformation, moving forward to a broken organization, to one grounded and unethical principle in operational fitness. Unfortunately, Mr. Childress appointed to his forces on toxic and hostile work environment that undetermining the progress made by Chief Steele. Mr. Childress conduct both in Biscayne Park and his previous workplaces of employment, Key Biscayne and Eldoral, reveal a consistent pattern of bullying and unethical behavior. Upon my, upon his arrival, Mr. Childress entered the chief of a police office in warranted aggression, raiding the chief for actions taken prior to his management, despite having no involvement in, in this matters. Furthermore, Mr. Childress made a notorious decision to remove take-home vehicles for part-time personnel citing non-insated. This action was not only unsupported by policies, but only unjustified to target the police department. Particularly given the take-home vehicles were maintained for departments within the village, including a vehicle that he took from the police department to use as his take-home card of pleasure. Commissioners hire him with no benefits in this clear abuse of his authority. Furthermore, Mr. Childress has regularly directed the chief of police and the command staff to engage in actions that were not unethical, unlawful. Chief Steele and myself refused to comply with this improper orders as we are both by our duties up to uphold the law and ethical standards. Mr. Childress ordered the command staff to write tickets to the residents of North Miami and exempt the residents of the Biscayne Park. This unlawful order was not followed. It is the great concern that I report this response to this action. Chief Steele and myself responded to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. Unfortunately, his response was escalating in his aggressive manner towards the department. On the same day that I filed a hostile working vitamin, he ordered Rosero to fire me. Thus, for me is retaliation. I urge you the commission to recognize the significant legal and ethical risk posed by Childress. Continue employment in this capacity. The, the ongoing liability of the village is considerable from a legal and reputation standpoint. I strongly implore the commission to take immediate action by removing this person out of his position of interim manager and throughout initiate an independence investigations into the complaints concealed from a public view and so forth. A six hostile working vitamins filed against him, which in the last month that he has on his file. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Rodriguez and my address is also protected under section one one nine. I'm a retired officer with twenty-four years of service from City of Miami. I started as a reservist and then accepted a position as a part-timer here. For the past one and a half years, I have enjoyed serving the quiet, close-knit community of Biscayne Park. However, since the arrival of interim village manager Albert P. Childress in November twenty twenty-four, the environment has deteriorated significantly, impacting both morale and operational efficiency within the police department. Mr. Childress decisions have caused unnecessary stress and hindered our ability to serve effectively. He immediately revoked take-home vehicles for part-time officers, the investigators, and the resource officers who are reservists, canceled scheduled trainings, and implemented petty policies like restricting access to village hall. These actions have created a ripple effect of dissatisfaction and frustration amongst the staff. As a part-time officer, I have no benefits, no medical coverage, no sick days, no paid holidays. My sole advantage was the use of a vehicle. And now even that has been taken away. Despite these challenges, I continue to answer calls and fill shifts due to staffing shortages exacerbated by Mr. Childress refusal to hire new officers. The situation has become untenable, especially with the requirement that a supervisor be present on every shift. A rule implemented by Mr. Childress and was strictly enforced until Chief Steele resigned due to the extreme stress over work and actions inflicted upon him by Mr. Childress. Mr. Childress's leadership has been detrimental. He prioritizes cost-cutting over safety, demanding that on-duty officers handle roadblocks for tree cutting instead of paying off-duty officers a clear liability. He also insinuated that I should issue citations to non-residents while giving only warnings to residents, which is both unethical and illegal. His actions reflect a focus on his own salary rather than the well-being of the community or the police department. The department is crippled by outdated equipment, including a failing computer system that often prevents us from writing reports. Many vehicles are worn out and constantly in need of repair. These issues coupled with Mr. Childress's poor leadership have created a crisis of confidence and capability. His policies have driven dedicated officers to resign and even harassed our chief to the point of resignation, leaving the department understaffed and under-resourced. For these reasons, I believe Mr. Childress has created a very hostile work environment and is a liability to Biscayne Park. I urge you to reconsider the suitability for this role and reopen the position to attract qualified candidates who can lead this community with vision and integrity. As the last remaining female officer in the village, it is with a heavy heart that I resign effective today. I can no longer stand by while the safety and well-being of this community are jeopardized. I hope you will act swiftly to restore the security and stability of Biscayne Park deserves. And by the way, in November, we would have been here, but we were told that it would be an act of war from Childress if we came here and we would be terminated.
Honorable members of this commission and everyone present, my name is Jai Listil. My address is legal protected under Florida State one one nine. Thank you for allowing me to the opportunity to speak today. I came before, you know, as a resident of this city, but as a concerned citizen of this, of this state and of this country, one of who believe in the law and order and in the responsibility of leadership to uphold those principles. When my husband Marcus still took office as the chief of police, this city was already facing significant challenges. The police department had lost credibility and restored public trust seen like a challenge task. But from day one, he works seriously to restore integrity, rebuild respect of his town, of this town, and bring back honor to the police department. His vision was to make Biscayne Park a modern community, one of the others could look up to as an example of professionalism and accountability. In his short time as a chief, he achieved remarkable progress and had in no been for certain obstacles beyond his control. I have no doubt he would have completionment even more. I have no, I, I know him for many years and I know that he will never under any circumstance allow his reputation to decline. His commitment to his out as a police officer, his duty to serve it to the public and his integrity have always been above of a personal interest. That is, that's why he will never engage in any illegal, unethical, and against a law. And certainly, he will never add again against to the well-being of the community he sought to protect. Meanwhile, a new city manager was appointed. According to publicity available record, this individual was previously separated from a position in Key West on June twenty-sixth of the year twenty twenty-four. This information is not speculation or classified. It's accessible through public sources, including Google and YouTube. It is concerning to see that similar discussions are now taking place in Biscayne Park. I encourage everyone instead to review the public available in those sources. This situation raises an important concern, not just for this community, but for all us who believe in the integrity of the legal system as a law-abiding system. I ask, how can I expect to public respect to the laws enforcement when concern continue to arise and decision being made within very obstructive enforcement? And I must ask, when, when will be the day the people can higher value and, and recognize for the education, their acknowledge the integrity on the honesty? When will be the day when qualification and ethic favoritism and recommendation on personal connections? Beyond hiring decision when conflicts arise in any work environment, why is only one side of the history hears? Why are actions taken beside on the perspective without ensuring that all viewpoint are considered?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna need you to wrap up.
Because of this, we continue to lost couple of passionate, professional people who dedicate their life to doing things that they, that they really care and they really like. Too often, those who speak up what right of the one of the pushes aside ignorant and forcing to out like Marcus still and Huddle and, and this lady that I don't know her name, I'm sorry, but she was forced to, to kick out just for one person. Okay, it is troubling to see lack of transparency and even more troubling to witness to absence of accountability. This is a deeply disappointing because this is the kind of thing I never saw. When I never saw, I was see in this country. I left Cuba believing that corruption and mismanagement were prevalent in the past. And yet here in this country, here we are. This is my personal opinion. So I still hold onto the hope the, the justice will show up. Because at the end of this day, no matter how far someone tried to run, reputation, trust, and honor will always stand above everything else. As I, as the saying goes, when trust arrives, life, the light has to run away. When trust arrive, light has to run away. I use this commission to reflect on this concern and to uphold the highest standard of the leadership because trust once broken is difficult to rebuild. Thank you so much because what is happening here is really a shame. I'm sorry for I take so long.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Joe. I'm the owner of the Tree Service and I just want to share some information. The trees that were removed, they didn't have any active nests. I actually personally emailed Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission and Pelican Harbor Seabird Station. And they said if the trees can be removed, if there are no, if the, if the nests are not active and active nests, they define as no eggs or chicks in the nest. So no birds were harmed in the process. Everything was done ethically and legally with good intentions. The, the Australian pines, they do kind of get bigger than the native trees. So they crowd out native trees and that's the intention of, you know, removing those and planting native trees. That's the initiative. You know, moving forward, if we decide, you know, if we as a village, a community decide we want to trim the trees instead of remove the remaining ones, I'm happy to do that. If you want to remove the remaining ones, I'm happy to do that. If you don't want to touch them at all, I'm happy to do that too. When no birds were harmed and I'm sorry about the stress I caused, you know, in the process, but you know, just working.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other comments?
Danielle Huntington, seven forty-four northeast one nineteen street. I wasn't planning to talk because like I wanted to see what the public had to say, but I had to mention that I applaud the village of Biscayne Park for moving the Australian pines. A lot of you may not know, I'm an environmental scientist by my education. I worked in the Southeast Environmental Research Center as a terrestrialologist at F I U for seven plus years. I specialized in. I specialized in invasive exotic terrestrial habitats. And I actually worked with endangered species such as the Cape Sable Seaside Sparrow with endangered habitat loss and restoration. I specialize in urban canopy restoration and assessments and helped do the Miami Dade mapping as well in a research project. I also was certified in agroecology and did my, one of my grad certification projects on allelopathic effects on tropical orchards. So just a little background. So when we talk about Australian pines, not only are they invasive, they're also exotic. So they exhibit behaviors that choke out or make the environment toxic to native species. So we're not just talking about something that's been here 100 years. It's something that's been here for over 100 years, creating a habitat that is actually not conducive to wildlife that is native here. They don't support any invertebrates besides termites and things that might eat the rot. So we're talking about a public safety hazard that a bunch of counties, a bunch of municipalities are on board with. And this is a project that's been talked about for over, what, 10 years, 12 years, something like that? So putting on my environmental hat, I applaud you for taking that step forward. There definitely could have been better communication, but it's a project that was much needed because these are trees that are just not suitable for like a bunch of pedestrians. And we have a bunch of native pines, Loblawli Slash, that could be replaced, that would actually support wildlife. And the number one detractor to wildlife in South Florida, as you all may know, is habitat destruction. So actually you're contributing to habitat destruction by having these trees that create allelopathic effects, toxic effects to the soil, to the trees around it, to anything native essentially. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the, from the public here? All right. Do we have anything on Zoom?
Yes, I would like to speak.
Mr. Raymond, unmute yourself, please.
Yes, hi. Good evening. David Raymond, 11520 Northeast 9th Avenue. Couple of things. Let me start with the drains, just so you won't hear about trees in the Did I, did I win? Wow. I'd like to thank the academy. Okay, so first of all, it's been very draining for the last decade to not have the drains cleaned. And I want to, I know that Commissioner Huntington has championed this for the last, I don't know, probably year or so that I've been fetching about this to him personally and the rest of you for the last however long you've been there. And I want to also thank our manager for getting a contract on board. Hopefully, the four of you can agree to approve that tonight. It didn't sound like you were getting, getting a lot of agreement in the beginning of the meeting, but please, whatever you do, please clean the drains. It's raining, it was raining a few minutes ago. So please clean the drains for the whole village. ESA did a wonderful report. The playground and the park, that is the heart of our village. And I wish that instead of mucking around with these grants that we haven't gotten done, not that I don't love grants, I've written a million of them, but we just cut down a bunch of trees and found a hundred and, what, $30,000 or something to do that, but we can't fix the playground for the kids. So please, I hope you would focus as much on doing those kinds of things. In terms of the trees, just to piggyback on what Danny was saying a little bit ago, I was on the Parks and Parkway Board for many years. There was a plan in place that predated me that identified the arborist, the trees that were bad, the pines that were bad and the ones that needed to go. And there was money in the budget every year to take them out and it didn't happen. Maybe one year, trees were removed. If this would have been done with the bad trees, the ones that were identified, that would be great. I too miss the birds every morning. I walk, creature of habit, I would walk up to 111th and visit my hole, there was a whole flock of parrots that went back and forth between the pines and I mourn them when I walk by. But I know that we need native trees there and I would hope that you would replace these with trees that provide the same height for the raptors and the parrots that use those. And finally, you know, people move here, we moved here, our children and grandchild live here because this place is safe and it's full of trees. I think that's why most people live here. But what we've heard tonight is that we're losing a lot of trees, maybe not in the best way. And I'm not sure how safe people are feeling. I know this is the third police chief issue, I'll just call it, since we've been here. Big issue. I don't know what's going on. I have no idea. People are writing on next door, is Metro taking over? God forbid, please, I say that as a former county employee. This village would, would end if we turned over policing to Metro Dade Police. We would get no attention because there's virtually no crime here compared to the other areas. So please, whatever you're thinking, don't do that. Anyway, thank you. And I'd like to thank the academy again.
Don S., unmute yourself, please.
Good evening. My name is Don Sales. My address is protected under Florida Statute 119. Thank you for being here today. As a private investigative reporter, I've spent countless hours uncovering the truth, sifting through documents and interviewing those who have crossed paths with Mr. Childress during his career. What I've found is deeply troubling and it's time we bring these facts into the light. Let's start with Key West. During his tenure as city manager, Mr. Childress was the center of serious allegations involving unethical practices and hostile treatment toward employees, particularly the city attorney. The concerns were so overwhelming that the commission made the decision to terminate his employment. Now, it's not uncommon for leaders to face criticism, but what followed was alarming. Rather than accept accountability, Mr. Childress retaliated by making false and shocking allegations to the state attorney. How did he manage this? By leveraging friendships from his days in Miami Beach. But it doesn't stop there. Before his time in Key West, Mr. Childress was employed in Doral. Officially, he claims to be retired, but I ask you this. Why would someone retire early only to jump right back into a city manager position elsewhere? It just doesn't add up. Even more suspicious was the severance package he received, a benefit not typically associated with a voluntary retirement, but rather a forced departure. My investigation uncovered that the mayor of Doral had significant concerns about Mr. Childress's professional conduct and ethical standards. These concerns led to a private conversation urging him to resign, essentially a gentle push out the door to avoid outright termination. Mr. Childress often boasts of his 40 years of professional management experience, yet a closer look shows a troubling pattern. Less than four of those years ended on anything but bad terms. At the heart of each controversy were accusations of unethical actions that raise serious questions about his abilities and more importantly, his motives. What's even more disturbing is the underlying pattern of addictiveness. From his code enforcement days to his recent roles, multiple interviews paint a consistent picture. Mr. Childress appears to use his authority not for public good, but for personal gain. Even in Biscayne Park, where he now holds office, residents and insiders alike have shared stories that suggest his behavior has not changed. Furthermore, I'm currently investigating potential bid rigging. As many have mentioned, Joe's was contracted to address the trees in the village with a contract of $120,000. This was presented to the commission as the lowest bid received, but inquiry with other companies revealed quotes ranging from $50,000 to $100,000. Quotes withheld from the commission. So what does this mean for Biscayne Park? In my professional opinion, this community is sitting on a ticking time bomb of liability. Keeping Mr. Childress in office isn't just a risk, it's a guarantee of trouble down the road. This investigation is far from over, but one thing is clear, you can't afford to turn a blind eye. The residents of Biscayne Park and eventually at every community Mr. Childress has touched deserve better. They deserve accountability, transparency and leadership that serves the public interest, not personal agendas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Louise B., unmute yourself, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Louise Blair. My address is protected under Florida Statute 119. I am also another private investigative reporter working on a story on the village of Biscayne Park. I am here today not only as an investigative reporter, but as someone who is deeply concerned about the path that Biscayne Park is headed down with its current leadership. My investigation into the hiring and actions of Mr. Childress has uncovered some truly alarming details that need to be brought to the forefront for the safety and well-being of this community. Let's start with something that I find deeply troubling, the hiring of a person like Mr. Childress. His past marked by serious concerns and a history that seems to have been carefully covered up through extreme measures raises a red flag from the start. Despite these glaring issues, he was selected to lead this community. However, the real shock came when I uncovered that that not only, can only be described as an alarming pattern of misuse and misappropriation of resources. One of the most concerning findings as of today that I am ready to release was Mr. Childress's personal use of police assets.
Sorry, Louise, it's a little hard to hear you. If you can get closer to your microphone.
So one of the most concerning findings as of today that I'm ready to release was Mr. Childress's personal use of police assets, specifically a vehicle that should never have been in his possession. The vehicle in question is a Tahoe originally part of the police fleet. It is alarming to think that Mr. Childress has taken this vehicle for his own personal use. Upon watching the commission meeting where he was appointed, I noticed the hesitation of many commissioners. They were clearly uneasy with his $176,000 salary, but they approved it nonetheless without, without any additional benefits. At first, Mr. Childress had access to a white Ford Explorer, the same vehicle the previous manager had been driving. But apparently, that wasn't enough for him. After several interviews, it became clear that Mr. Childress didn't want an older vehicle. Instead, he took it upon himself to take a police vehicle, one that's leased and paid for, out of the police budget. This included hundreds of dollars spent just to remove the emergency equipment, all so that he could drive this vehicle as if it were his own. But the story doesn't end there. My investigation revealed that Mr. Childress has been ordering police vehicles to be auctioned off. He argues that these vehicles are old and too expensive to maintain. But if that's the case, why would he take a vehicle that is in good working order for himself? This raises the question, is this not misappropriation of government assets? Even more troubling, further investigation revealed that part-time police officers who work week in and week out are being told to park their assigned vehicles. The excuse, a missing policy. But I dig deeper and guess what I found? There is a policy for the police, but what does not exist is one that permits the city manager and other departments to have take-home vehicles. This raises even more questions about Mr. Childress's judgment and his understanding of ethical conduct in public office. But this is just one example of his troubling behavior. As I continued my investigation, I uncovered evidence of multiple hostile work environment complaints, nearly six in a matter of just a few months. These complaints were covered up and the culture of silence surrounding them is one of the most alarming aspects of this investigation. Nearly everyone that was filed one of these complaints has been forced to resign or retire. This and his alarming trend and points to the retaliation of one man, Mr. Childress. I am still compiling the full extent of my findings, but before I publish my complete investigative report, I wanted to take the opportunity to share these critical examples with you. The actions I've uncovered raised serious questions about Mr. Childress's leadership and his commitment to serving.
Louise, we need you to wrap up, please.
Okay, I'm about done. His behavior, as I've shown, is not only unethical, but potentially illegal. This is not the end of the story, but the beginning of the conversation. In the near future, I will be releasing my more in-depth article that sheds light on the full extent of my investigation. Biscayne Park deserves better leadership and it is time for the truth to come to light. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, can you unmute yourself?
Thank you. Chris Truitt. My address is protected under 119071. What I'm about to say is my opinion based on my observations. It's come to my attention that Manager Childress intends to investigate Mark Steele for his involvement in the termination of Roberto Navarro. It would appear that he is trying to exact some sort of revenge. The actions taken by Steele were ordered by me and by Chief Louis Cabrera. We received complaints about Navarro's behavior as it pertained to creating a hostile work environment. We instructed Steele, under the authority of Internal Affairs, to investigate the complaints. Based on the outcome of that investigation, Cabrera recommended, and I agreed with, the termination of Navarro while he was in probationary status. The idea that Steele was involved in any sort of plot or corruption is complete lunacy. I can only surmise that those claims are a desperate attempt at retribution by Childress. Steele did the job we ordered him to do, investigate objectively. I am aware of three complaints of a hostile work environment filed against Childress due to his attempts to destroy anyone whom he sees as a threat to his authority or agenda. Now that I'm gone and now that Steele is gone, it is my opinion that the old faction, with its horrible management practices and corruption, is attempting to regain control of BPPD and will stop at nothing to do so. In my opinion, Childress is answering that in. If that's what Biscayne Park wants, so be it, but stop trying to take down innocent people. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I think that's the last one.
David Raymond is, I think, believe his wife wanted to speak.
Oh.
His hand's still up.
Mr. Raymond, does Ms. Raymond want to speak? Does Mrs. Raymond want to speak?
Let me just, can we hurry up? Hi, Amy Raymond, 119, 11520, sorry, there's an echo, Northeast 9th Avenue. You know, I'm so sorry about all of this, especially about the chief because he was, it was really an honor to know him. He's the most, one of the most beautiful people with incredible integrity, which I thought Manager Childress had. I'm sorry, I was wrong. I was wrong. I'm sorry. But I should have, I should have done some, you know, had more knowledge before I spoke. But it's just a shame to lose the chief. It was just, it's just the best that he's one of, he's just a great person and he's a very bright human being and he was just such a great chief and that's just the saddest thing that he should be, he should have to leave because of what's gone on here and I hope he'll come back when, I hope he'll come back. So, and, and please get our drains cleaned, not just for us, but for the whole village. Because it's really serious. It's a really serious issue, the drainage of Biscayne Park. So please put us on a schedule and get it done. Thank you all.
Thank you, Amy.
Yes, I would like to speak.
There's someone else?
Yes. Bobby Navarro, I would like to speak.
Go ahead, Mr. Navarro.
Yes, I heard what Mr. Truitt said and what Mr. Mark Steele said. And I would like to say that I am a professional law enforcement officer for 45 years. Gone through the ranks from public service aide to police officer, to detective, to investigator at the federal level, to the Department of Justice with a top secret clearance. I have worked homicide, burglary, robbery, kidnappings, anything that you can think of. I was a commander of an internal affairs unit. I was a commander of a human trafficking unit and I was the previous assistant chief there. And what I would like to say is that not only is Mark Steele a liar, and so is Chris Truitt, that I can prove it. And Mark Steele has admitted that what he wrote about me and what Chris Truitt did was wrong and was a lie. And he has admitted it to another chief of police and he has admitted it to your village attorney. And I have formally filed documents with proof that he has lied. Furthermore, it is public record that he was terminated from his previous employment, not like he says that he left, for filing complaints of hostile work environment against every single one of his bosses, his captain or his major, even the chief of the department. This is his course of conduct. He can't help it. He was recruiting people to go to the state attorney's office to file charges against the current manager, people who said they didn't have any information and didn't want to go. This is part of his little game to try to get a manager out that's holding him accountable. And if you think that he's truthful, go to his LinkedIn account right now and look where it says his history and it says that he was a deputy chief for the village of Biscayne Park for two years. You and everybody on this conversation knows that that's a lie. He was a deputy chief for three months, four months maximum. And the only reason he got there is because he was Chris Truitt's little boy. That's it. Not because of qualifications. He was never even a first-line supervisor, only at the Bureau of Tobacco and Liquor where he worked at, where they terminated him for poor performance because he couldn't even supervise three people. I'm not telling you anything that's not a public record. Please Google it. And if you don't believe me, ask the village manager and the village attorney who I have met with. And I have gone to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement after I requested public records. and I have gone to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement after I requested public records of eight or nine memos that he said Steele wrote, and he hid them from me, and they didn't provide them from me. To this day, they have not provided them to me. I got them through another public records report when they gave them to another potential employer. As you know, that is a violation of the law, Florida State Statute 119. It's also a violation of Florida State Statute 838, okay, of official misconduct. So before you believe everything that Mark Steele tells you, do your homework, because the village is in serious liability right now, especially with me.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no comments from the from the public. Go ahead, finish. You need to wrap up, Mr. Navarro, please.
Okay, that's it, I'm done. What I said, I've given it in writing to the village attorney. And I requested a formal investigation, not like them that they hid it. They didn't investigate anything about me. They just wrote it and said it was true. But now I got to respond, and I got to show how they lied, how they lied.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Navarro. Appreciate it. All right, anything, anybody else?
I have three emails that were sent to me to be, three emails to Mayor Roth and the commission. I was extremely disheartened. I'm sorry. It's from Kara Enix, 1162 Northeast 105 Street, Miami Shores. I was extremely disheartened to hear that many of the Australian pines in Biscayne Park had been cut down, and especially in the manner in which it was done. In my opinion, the most beautiful and valuable elements of Biscayne Park are its tree canopy and the nature that inhabits it. Even if some of those trees are invasive Australian pine. Cutting down trees with active nests during nesting season is never okay. Any landscape company who is active in this area should know that and understand that the trees must be inspected before removal going forward to protect the trees, the wildlife, and the status as a bird sanctuary. I hope that you will understand and appreciate the importance of protecting wildlife and perhaps assign a public works employee to monitor the process of future tree removal to ensure compliance with best practice of inspection before removal. Removal of the remaining pines cannot happen until July, when it will be safer for the birds. I appreciate the memo from Commissioner Amsler as it regards future tree selection, and I'm sure that you will be able to find local tree experts to help you with the selection of appropriate replacement trees that are native and will one day become new habitat for wildlife we love. Ms. Mary Benton, founding director of Bound by Beauty. Uh, she does not have her address here, but it was distributed to, it was disturbed to read. I was disturbed to read that proper procedures were not followed when cutting down the Australian pines in Biscayne Park, resulting in several being cut down that had active yellow-crowned night heron nests in them. These beautiful native birds are important part of the ecosystem, and they are protected by the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. Additionally, as a bird sanctuary, BP should be especially careful to protect nesting birds. I ask that you follow the expert advice from the Tropical Autobahn Society and leave the remaining trees on 121st Street untouched all through July in order to not disturb any nests. I am a resident of neighboring Miami Shores and have seen these remarkable birds from time to time in our village and strongly believe they must be protective, protected wherever they are nesting. I agree that the pines should be cut down when it is safe to do so and hope they will be replaced by oaks or other trees that provide sanctuary and sustenance for important wildlife like birds. I ask that this email be read to the commission as I am unable to attend the meeting. Thank you, Mary Benton. Katrina Morris, a Miami resident, 33133. Dear Biscayne Park Commission, I recently learned that about, learned about the Australian pine removal that happened without a wildlife assessment that destroyed the yellow-crowned night heron nesting site. Twenty-nine out of thirty-seven Australian pines were recently cut down in Biscayne Park, a bird sanctuary, without expert wildlife inspection. Yellow-crowned night herons lost their nesting trees during nesting season. I implored the intent to replace the invasive Australian pines with native trees and mistakes happen. That is a good opportunity to review procedures and codify steps to avoid future habitat loss. Katrina Morris. That's it, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. We have no other public comment. We'll close public comment. All right, public comment is closed. Do any commissioners wish to reply to anybody?
Mr. Vice Mayor, before you do that, may I just make us, just provide some advice to the commission? Thank you. With regards to your comments or your replies to public comment, I would, I would just advise and recommend to the members of the commission that you not discuss or specifically address any allegations related to any type of whistleblower, discrimination, retaliation claims, or anything of that nature. Those, I can tell you that those matters are being looked into. And I would suggest to the members of this commission that it would not be in the best interest of the village at this time for you to discuss the specifics as to those matters that have been brought up. There are, there is a, under Florida Statute 119071, there is a confidentiality provision with regards to the complaints of discrimination, although I think to some extent, those have been thrown out the door, but I would still, or out the window, I guess is a better way to put it, but I would still recommend to the members of this commission that they don't address or comment on the specifics of the allegations being made.
All right, thank you, Brad. All right, anybody have a response?
Yes, I do. I'm concerned about the comments that are made here tonight by former police officers and the public. I am also concerned about two emails that I received from the chief and another officer, so much that I requested a special commission meeting, which I didn't have the support to have. I tried to put on the agenda as a discussion item about these two emails that I received, but the attorney and the city manager told me that I didn't follow the rules, and I couldn't get it in. I didn't get it in no time. That was not true. The manager was very angry about about it and told me that I had to go through him, and he would tell the clerk if I can put on the agenda. He decides what goes on the agenda. We have never had that in the past. I would like to read for the record my discussion item, which I asked a attorney, can I read my discussion item? Or can I just put it into the, since I'm not allowed to have the discussion items, can I read?
These are, you're making.
Okay, I'm asking.
Replies to public comment.
Right, so I'm asking, so I'm asking you before I did it.
Reply however you see fit.
Thank you. I, this was an item that I put on for my, for the agenda. I request, I would like to request, since I didn't get an opportunity to have a special commission meeting, I decided to put it on the agenda for discussion with the commission, which is the correct thing to do. I would like to request the opportunity to add a discussion item to the agenda for the upcoming commission meeting to address an important matter. I believe it is necessary for the interim village manager to be temporarily relieved of his duties pending a formal investigation, in the interest of fairness similar to the actions taken in the case of the police chief. Two emails were sent by the police chief referring to a hostile work environment, and action was taken against the police chief shortly afterward. I would like to discuss the whistleblower protections and the proper steps to follow in such cases. The interim city village manager is currently facing four allegations, turns out to be five, from three different employees. Given grave of these allegations, I believe the interim village manager should be immediately suspended pending independent investigation. This situation differs from the police chief's case when a single allegation was by a disgruntled former employee who had already raised a similar claims with the previous village manager, which was found to be lack of reasonable basis, led to his suspension. We need to treat all employees at the same, the same. I would, I believe this commission needs to suspend, the allegations that are being made against the city manager need to be investigated, and I think that we need to suspend this city manager with with pay. And so that's my statement.
First, I'll defer to our attorney and say that all investigations are pending, and I won't comment further on any of those active investigations. To the trees and the birds, first, let me start off by saying we lead a very eco-conscious family. We are friends of nature. We plant native. We welcome all types of butterflies and birds into our, into our house or into our backyard. But with that being said, public safety comes first. These trees were talked about six years ago. Six years ago was decided by independent arborists that they were dangerous. They have been sat on for six years. That's six years they got taller, six years they got more dangerous, that the rot set in. It was, I understand that they should have been trimmed, but that was not the world we live in today. Just two months ago, a tree fell without rain, without wind, it just fell on its own. That could have hit a child, that could have hit a family, that could have hit a car, that could have hit your house, any one of your houses. I understand birds were displaced. No birds were harmed, no eggs were in the nests. The, this was done ethically, this was done in the right way. I personally went out in the first days of cutting and witnessed Joe's stopping for a nest to investigate it, stopping for a raccoon that was in the tree, stopping for two beehives that were successfully removed. I will always advocate for native trees to be replanted. I will always advocate to protect wildlife, but I will always advocate for public safety. It comes first. Thank you.
Thank you. She wanted a comment, but since she's not here, I'll just comment quickly. I just wanted to answer something that you said in your, in your comments about opening up the manager position. The manager position is open. He is still the interim manager, and we are actively in the process of coming up with a benefits package and opening that job up for others to apply for that job. So it's not, he doesn't, he's not the permanent manager at this point. So I just wanted to make sure that you understood, you understood that, okay? Commissioner Amsler, you have something you want to?
Yeah, are we done?
Yes.
Thank you. So yeah, first of all, thank you to everybody that took the time to come forward and engage with the commission to hear you out. We don't get a lot of this feedback straight up. Many times, people are very busy with their lives, and when these things matter, everybody comes forward. So even clearly, these two things are very important, police department and our trees and our, who we are in Biscayne Park. So thank you for that. Everything related to the legal aspects of any investigation going, I defer to the attorney. I don't think he's heard me as much as you've heard me in the last month and conversations back and forth. I don't think we've ever spoken as much with the attorney since I've been here in the commission for the past two-plus years, as we have in the last couple of months. So that is in essence, to me, a little bit of a pulse of what's going on. And I don't love it, but again, I defer to the processes in place when it comes to legal matters. Having that said, there's two topics. The police department, for those that weren't here before the commission meeting started today, I propose that we added an item to the agenda. The item was to talk about the police department leadership transition. I was quoted that that was not an emergency, as it states in our charter, for the very first time. Since I've been a commissioner, we've had multiple items walk on. This is the first time that I'm not allowed to bring it on. It's a sensitive matter, and I believe it's been just us to be quiet about it. So I urged the rest of the commission to reconsider to make it an emergency meeting for us to discuss. Clearly, this is far more bigger than what we anticipated, and I think we need to discuss it. There's some of this going around, if you want to read what the matter was about, but it was about the future. My item was to focus on what's next. The purpose of this is to have the best interests of the village at heart. In 2023, we built, together with Commissioner Art, I think you were the only one, and Commissioner Mayor Roth now, and another commission, different commission, the values of the village for the very first time. It was the first strategic vision. Our values start from an acronym, that acronym is trust. And the T stands for transparency. And I think it's very delicate to be true to those values. And so I think we urge, you know, I urge again that we consider having that conversation soon. I think it's been missing lately. I, there had not been proper communication of the agendas, proper communication of the election. We have resolutions in place that have not happened. I think we need to make a stop and consciously think about how we are acting. That is in regards to the police department. So again, I'm hoping that we make that pause and we have the conversation. In regards to the birds and the trees, we are a bird sanctuary. The first ordinance for the village passed in 1932, making us so. It is part of our identity, and it is part of our values. If you go back to listen to the commission meeting we had last month, it was myself that made the request that every tree that we were going to knock down be inspected by accredited organization. That didn't happen until people like Melanie, and I'm sure other people contacted and been calling about what is going on. So thank you for, again, engaging, telling us about it. I would have known now what a blue heron crown, yellow heron is, and I am admiring the fact that there's so many people that stand behind it, as I stated on my point last month. On my way to meet with Melanie to understand and show me, she showed me the birds in the tree that were in the different tree, clearly, that the other trees are being knocked down next to it. By chance, I met three gentlemen that were visiting the village, taking pictures of our, of our birds. One from Arizona, one from New Jersey, and one Floridian. And they just came here every fishing season to do that because they enjoy the variety of wildlife they might, they find. So it's in the values again. Of course, Joe, thank you for what you do. This has nothing to do with you personally and the job that you perform. I think it's, it's from how we operate and how we sort of move forward with the directions that being given. In this case, you know, you're a vendor. I was hoping accredited organization that has no financial benefit come and do that clearance. So I think my suggestion would be that today we consider making this in a special meeting, so we have the conversation about these topics. I did commit to have a further view into the current ordinance for the bird sanctuary that we have, as well as the different things that we can do to prevent this happen again. There are some trees left over. We need to see how that's going to be considered. The trees need to come down. It's been said many times for safety reasons and liability issues. If that's the course, we can slow down. We've been fast and forward, very much so. I very much appreciate the experience Mr. Childress brings to the table when it comes to management. We needed that. But we're a very, very small village. We are not Key West, we're not Weston. We are very small. And we need to make sure we're treated with the characteristics that we have. And I think lately we've been treated a little bit like a big city, moving very straightforward, very fast. So I propose we slow down, and that will be the end of my comments. I was going to say during my commission report, so you'll save some time there. But yeah, that's my proposition to you all.
This is a proposition. I'll respond to that. Matters of life safety, you don't slow down. You take action right away. That tree could have fallen on family, that tree could have fallen on a child, could have fallen on a car, could have fallen on a house. I come from a public safety, life safety background. You don't slow down when, when life safety is concerned. These trees were classified dangerous six years ago. We are well past borrowed time. Slowing down could potentially cost someone their, their life, and I don't want to say, well, hopes and dreams, hopes and prayers, I'm so sorry. You do something, you do something now. By all means, if there's an endangered bird, which this is no longer an endangered bird, it's a least affected bird now at this point, we don't endanger it, we don't move nesting sites. But if there's no nest in the trees, the trees that don't have nests should come down, they should come down, we should continue the contract. Because matters of life safety, of public safety, you don't slow down on those. You, you move forward, and you move forward to protect the public good.
I just, I just want to add that, it's my understanding, and I may be wrong, but I heard also that at some point, certain trees were identified or because they had, you know, they had been identified as potentially dangerous trees. And then now, what I heard is that having cut down some of the trees that weren't even identified, they also had significant rot in the, in the trunk of the tree that could have potentially have caused severe damage to a home or to a pedestrian or, or, you know, whatever. So, so I just want everybody to understand that, you know, I, I, for me, you know, I don't want to cut anything. I don't want to cut any tree. But when you put it as a life safety issue, and the fact that, you know, people, this is a very walking community, as everybody knows here, that, that lives here, everybody's always walking. And, and God forbid, one of those trees, like the, the other one that fell in a non-storm, non-wind event, happens to fall and kill somebody, then that would have changed the narrative, right? And so that's, that's the way I look at it. Having said that, you know, I think, you know, going forward, you know, there's, there's certain trees that may still have nests in them, and I think that perhaps, you know, we need to slow down a little bit there. If, if, if you all agree, I, I don't know the answer to that. I, I don't know anything about migrating birds. I love birds, I have bird feeders all over my house because I love to see them, but, so I don't, I don't understand the, the complexity there, but if that's a possibility, you know, we're not go, we're, you know, we're far, we're still far, a little far away from, from storm season, so perhaps, you know, I don't know. I don't know the answer, but I, I, I think that's just something for us all to, to consider. Yes. I'm sorry, public comment is closed. Go ahead, I'll let you answer the question. Because they didn't do it when they should have done it, right? No, I, I, well, I understand, but you understand from, from an administrative standpoint and from a city standpoint, the liability piece, right, of, you know, of one of these trees, just like, again, like the tree that fell. God forbid, you know, so we save a nest and somebody dies, right? So you have to take that in from, from our sitting here where we are, not sitting where you are, and, and I, and I understand where you're coming from, but you have to try to understand where we're coming from. You know, we're trying to do, trying to protect the residents of this village, right? And, and it's a very hard thing to, you know, juggle, I get it. But from our perspective, that's, that's what, that's what we're looking at is, you know, can one of these trees fall and kill somebody? So, you know, that's, that's a difficult thing, yes.
I may intersect because then we can go back and forth with people having additional comments. Can we meet to have this discussion and bring an expert to tell what was the best? We are not going to ourselves decide that, it was not a point of conversation. Actually, we don't have it in the agenda today. What we have in the agenda is my proposal to consider the tree replacement plan. What we don't have today is discussing whether the trees come down or not.
So what I would suggest, Commissioner Amsler, is it seems like there are two pressing matters for you, right?
Correct.
The police issue.
Correct.
Which, again, I, I'm certainly not prepared to discuss it today because I, I just, I got this.
Yes.
And, and the tree issue. So perhaps, you know, through the, through the manager, reach out to the mayor.
Yes.
And see if he will call a special meeting. I'm fine, I think it's important, and I would, I'd be more than happy to attend. But I think that that's the best.
I appreciate it.
Something to say, what's up, Brad?
Very quickly, just under your, under your, your code, either the mayor or four, or four commissioners can call a special meeting.
Okay.
So you have enough commissioners seated right now, if, if you have a consensus to call a special meeting on that.
I'm happy to call a special meeting if you guys want to do it.
And I'm happy to check now when we can do it.
Okay, great. So there you go, special meeting, when do you guys want to meet?
Is that a consensus of all four?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye, aye.
I didn't hear.
So I'm, I'm, I'm leaving on the 13th and back on the 20th. So the last week of March, I'm, I'm, I'm here all, all, all that week.
I can do Wednesday, Thursday this week, so tomorrow and the day after, and the following week.
The mayor's, the mayor's sick, I, I.
Oh, I'm sorry. Of course. I would want that too. Okay, so next week. So it would be, I'm available to do it?
Next week, I'm here 10, 11, no, I'm actually busy on the 10th, 11th, and 12th. The 13th, I leave.
So, so 11, so 10, 11th, or 12th, I'm open, I will make myself available.
So for me, ideally, it would be the 12th.
Okay.
If that works for, I don't know.
It works for me.
Yeah, I'll be Zoom on 12th.
Okay.
Okay, but it's a, it's a, the 12th is a Wednesday. You're good? Okay.
Excuse me, is the code compliant?
12?
No, there's a code compliance meeting on the 12th.
There's a code compliance meeting? So can we have the meeting earlier?
If you can do it before.
I can move, I can.
It starts at 6 o'clock.
Cannot. Not under, under your code, you cannot, because you're going to.
Cannot do what?
If you're going to take legislative action, you cannot.
It has to be at 6 o'clock?
It has to be in the evening, yes.
The evening.
Okay.
So we can do Wednesday?
Wednesday is the 12th.
Oh, that's the 12th. The 11th?
The 11th. I, I, I'll, I can move some things around the 11th.
Okay.
Is the 11th open?
Before you get into, I'm, I'm unavailable the 11th.
Oh, so forget the 11th, he's unavailable. All right. And let's, guys, and then we're going to have to shoot for the, the last week of March.
Can you not do the 10th?
The 10th, I'm, I'm, to 10th, I'm busiest.
You're not, okay.
10th is, is no bueno. Actually, you know what? Hold on, let me, let me see something. You're, you're not available at 10. Oh, let's shoot for the, the last week of March, that's, that's the only thing we can do. I'm, I'm here the entire week, whatever, whatever day.
And you do via Zoom, or you, because you don't need to be in person if you're, or, or you can be available at all for a few hours? No, no, I'm saying the following week he's traveling.
Oh, no, I, 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 I'm going to be drinking a lot of tequila, so I'm not going to be good on Zoom or anywhere else.
I get you. All right, so you tell me when you guys are, I'm making myself.
The last, the last week, the last week, I'm here the entire week, so you guys pick.
Only question, just a question, that are the trees going to be, continue to be cut down until we have this meeting? Or we're going to?
Well, it, there was a recommendation, you know, back and forth, given a lot of emails to reconsidering, and actually, I believe the manager instructed that we were going to wait until the nesting season it ends. So I don't think there is an urgency in, in terms of the next week is going to come down. If this is a decision that we need to make in that meeting, then it needs to happen before the end of the month. But I think the direction was, and Mr. Manager, if you can correct that, didn't you say that that would take effect? The remaining trees, we're going to wait?
Yeah, we, we, Commissioner, we made that determination that day.
Yes.
We also told the residents, and we told the vendor that day.
Right, so let's. There's also some, I, I have to review.
All right, so can we pick the last week of March, please?
You tell me.
Any day.
Available 25, 26, 27, so any day.
25, 26, 27.
Any day you want.
What days are available, 25, 26, 27?
You're good on those.
On those days, Commissioner Samara, you good on those days?
I'm good on those.
Okay, 6 o'clock, 25, 25th?
Amen.
Why don't we give 25, 26, 27 to the mayor and see if, which one he's available? Because we, we're speaking for him, he's not here.
I will, I will be open to made any of those three days?
Give the, that, that range of dates, and that we let the mayor weigh in as well.
I will.
You can send an email out to everybody?
I will.
Okay, cool, perfect, there you go. Good, good suggestion. All right. Are we good? All right, so we're going to move forward. So Village Reports? No, because we didn't have a, you, we, we didn't have a consensus on the, on the agenda. So we have to go through the agenda as is. So Village Manager Report, and then Building Department.
Vice Mayor, can we take a five-minute break before?
Absolutely. Five-minute break.
Imagine if they go to the whole Pine Tree Avenue in Miami Beach. I don't know, I don't know, this is the thing, I know, you know, there is, and it's a lot of noise around the Australian fines, that's what they're taking in Arleta. Now, think about this.
Sorry.
Right? The biggest millionaire street in Miami Beach, fine drive, and they will never, in million years, will take it, and they will say, oh, because it's going to fall in a $50 million. But, but again.
I'm sharing your thoughts on this, I appreciate it.
But this is, this is, we got a leather, but that are protected by a, right? So, and I told that to, to the manager, because the manager, I say, you're supposed to have three bees. You guys have only one. Want to help you, but anyways. Then, the other part is, he's not capable to, to inspect the trees, to say, oh, there was no activity. These are migrated birds. Actually, I didn't know that the birds were there, he told me because they show up that day. Now, remember, so they circle, they look, they take the time, they start the place. So it has to be inspection done the day, nine months before, not the two weeks before. My thing is, it was a lot of things that were. I, I just paid $40 to clean my car. I have a vintage camper that I paint that now is all red, which I don't care, because I'm part of it, right? And absolutely safe, cut the files, the trees. I had to call the police this weekend.
We're gonna give the, she's gonna send that an email and give a range for.
Twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven.
I think we're all open for all those three days or something, right?
Yes. And that, there will be an agenda to include two topics, the Police Department and related to the tree situation. Yes.
If you want to include the, whatever, whatever else you want to.
I think we, we need to touch base on what the next steps are on the tree. There is a discussion about a plan for replacement, but this specifically about what's happened to the ones that are left.
This, I think we have to do it in the next meeting.
All right, acquired.
Okay. Are we good? Are we recording? Everybody's, all right, great. Okay, so we're going to Village, to the reports. Commission, Managers' Report first.
Yeah, good evening, Vice Mayor members of the Village Commission. I would like to thank Commissioner Gonzalez for submitting his name for the vacant Village Commission seat. His knowledge of the, his knowledge of the business world and being a longtime Village resident serves the Village well. We thank him for his commitment to the Village and we look forward to working with him on the important issues facing the Village. During the month of February, six LTCs were issued concerning various incidents that occurred during the month. We'll be continuing to issue these to keep the mayor and Village Commissioners informed when incidents occur. As we move forward and revamp our website, I hope to be able to post these LTCs on the website for public to see. During the month of, of February, we held our Strategic Planning Session, in which the upcoming twenty-five, twenty-six budget was discussed. The meeting was held a half-day on Friday and a full-day on Saturday. I wish to thank our Department Directors for attending and contributing to the discussion on our needs and not just on our wants. I also thank the public that attended and gave up their Saturday to attend this important process. Our Strategic Planner Herb Marlowe will be finalizing his report in the upcoming week, and then we'll be making a presentation on that report in April. I thank him for taking out, time out from his busy schedule to meet with us and help facilitate, facilitate this process. I recently sent out an email from our state lobbyist that provided an update on the mayor's trip to Tallahassee, as well as our appropriations request. One of the sponsors of our appropriations is Senator Anna Maria Rodriguez. She's the, she's not the Senator from our district, but has graciously agreed to sponsor the request. She's on the Appropriations Committee for Agriculture, Environmental, and General Government. She's a longtime friend who has supported me throughout my career, and I want to thank her once again for assisting the Village of Biscayne Park with our appropriations request. From our outside consultant continues to work on updating the Village website with respect to our minutes for the Commission meetings. We're up to date for 2025. We identified the minutes that are missing for 2024 and 2023. Those minutes should be on the agenda for April for approval. With the resignation of our former Police Chief, I've named Captain Rosario as the Acting Chief, and while we conduct a statewide search for our next Police Chief. The position is being advertised on our website, the Florida Lega City City County Managers Association website, those three statewide websites. I'll be issuing a detailed LTC on the interview process as we move closer to the end of the month. Also, I, I hope that you had the opportunity to meet our new part-time captain, Carlos Avala, who's sitting in the back of the room. Raise your hand, Carlos, who brings forward a vast amount of experience having been in law enforcement, close to four years. We thank him for his interest in Biscayne Park and look forward to working with him on a closer basis as we continue, continue to improve the level of police services we provide to our residents. Thank you for your time.
Building?
Vice Mayor Building's not here.
Vote Compliance? I saw the ring.
Yeah, she's here.
You have nothing to say?
The report, all the reports are attached to the agenda, just if there's any questions.
Perfect. All right. I'm sure Finance has something to say though. Park and Recreation? Nothing. All right, we already talked. We've talked for three hours. Okay, we're good. Police Department, all right, we're good, I guess, right? Unless we have questions for the gentleman. Public Works, the same. Okay, so that's that for that. Crackerjack? Yes. Commissioner Reports, that's right. Go ahead. Commissioner Reports. Anybody have a report?
Good evening, fellow Commissioners, staff, and members of our community. Thank you for being here today for your continued commitment to transparency and integrity in our government. I want to express my deep concern and alarming regard in the recent decision made by our manager being involved in a process to hire an attorney to investigate himself. This is, this action raises huge questions and concerns about transparency.
Commissioner, if I may, that, that's not accurate. I, I retained the outside firm to conduct an investigation into the allegations that were made against the manager. The manager didn't hire a firm to do that. Just, just so the record's very clear.
We'll change that.
That's not, that's not accurate at all.
Thank you. Me, okay, for this attorney being, okay. This action raises huge questions, concerns, and transparency, accountability, and a proper process that must be followed to maintain public trust. Let's be clear, this decision is not oversteps, not only oversteps the established procedures of this commission for risk involving very foundation of confidence that our community places in us as their representatives. The way this hiring was conducted without prior discussion, approval, or transparency, given the appearance of backdoor process, that is unacceptable. First and foremost, any investigation involved in the conduct, conduct, city manager or the Police Chief must be independent and free from any potential conflicts of interest. Allowing the manager to be involved, or an attorney to be involved in this process, even with the attorney, and engage an attorney to investigate his own actions compromise the integrity of the investigation from the outset. No individual should have the authority to influence or control the inquiry into their own conduct. Secondly, this matter should have been brought directly before this commission for discussion and a formal vote. As Commissioners, we have the responsibility to ensure that all our actions taken on behalf of our community are open, transparent, and subject to proper oversight. The failure to do so undermines our authority and disrespects the trust that our constituents have placed on us. To address these concerns, I'm calling for the following actions. A full and transparent disclosure of the circumstances surrounding the hiring of this attorney, including terms of engagement, the scope of the investigation, and the decision-making process that led it to this action. An immediate suspension, suspension of any investigative activities conducted by this attorney until the commission has the opportunity to review and approve the process in public format. The appointment of an independent investigator, once selected by this commission, not by an individual under scrutiny, to ensure that the investigation is impartial, credible, and above reproach. This should be done by CO process, bid process, through the Village Clerk. I would recommend five CO bids in this case, presented to this, to the clerk, then to the mayor, would open it up at a special commission meeting, where the commission would select the lowest bid. This is not about casting blame prematurely, but about ensuring that our actions reflect the highest standards of accountability, transparency, that the public rightfully demands. It is important to restore the confidence that the decisions made by this body are fair, impartial, and free from undue influence. In closing, I urge the fellow Commissioners to join me in addressing the matter swiftly and decisively. Let's demonstrate to our community that we will not tolerate actions that threaten the integrity of our governance and diminish the public's trust. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, can I just respond, just so the record's very clear? I was gonna ask you to explain, so, under, under your, under the Village's employee rules, if an allegation is, an employment-related allegation is brought by an employee of the Village against, against anybody other than the manager, that complaint goes to the manager, and the manager has the obligation to initiate an investigation, either internally or through an independent third party. If the employee makes an allegation directed towards the manager himself, the, your, your employment rules specifically require that that complaint is not directed to the manager, because they are the subject of the complaint, that it's directed to the Village Attorney, which is what has happened in this situation as it relates to your former Police Chief. As a result of that allegation being made, I went out and retained an independent law firm to conduct the investigation into that allegation, as is my responsibility, under the rules as, that have been approved by this, by your, well, former Commissions, that have been adopted by former Commissions that are codified in your personnel rules. With regards to the allegations that you've heard tonight, and I'm not gonna go into details, but with regards to the allegations you heard tonight from Mr. Navarro, who was a former Deputy Chief in the Police, in the Police Department here, there were, there was a meeting that was held with Mr. Childress and myself, and, and Mr. Navarro. I can tell you that I was remote, as I was out of, I was out of South Florida at the time, but I appeared remotely. Mr. Navarro provided documentation that he wanted the Village to consider. I had an opportunity to review that documentation, and based on that documentation, I had conversations with the manager, and, and the manager adhered to my advice that he not be involved in that investigation in any way, shape, or form, that he allowed me to retain the services of another outside, separate, independent investigator who was separate from the, the law firm that is doing the investigation into the allegations brought by former Chief Steele. I have reached out to several, and, and again, I understand the budgetary constraints of the Village. I've reached out to several, several individuals, and that investigation is a little bit different. It's not necessarily an employment-related where it requires a lawyer, but it requires somebody with investigative skills, as well as internal affairs experience. I have reached out to several individuals. I have ultimately, after interviewing several individuals and investigative firms, I have chosen an individual who has a long history in law enforcement, but not in Miami-Dade County. There actually a long history of law enforcement in Broward County. And the reason why I selected somebody in, in Broward County as opposed to Miami-Dade County, not that somebody within Miami-Dade County couldn't do an excellent job and get, do an unbiased investigation, but my, my choice to go out of the county was because several of the possible witnesses that would need to be interviewed in that investigation are Miami-Dade law enforcement, either present or past Miami-Dade law enforcement, and I wanted to make sure that there was no connection whatsoever between the potential investigator and any of the witnesses. So, I, tomorrow morning, I am meeting with this individual, and he, we are, we're going to discuss the terms of an agreement, which we essentially have the terms pretty much worked out. There's one or two things that we need to discuss. I expect that I will be providing him with an, with an agreement in which he will conduct, you know, agree to conduct this investigation. I'm expecting to have it by tomorrow afternoon. I can tell you that I'm, I'm working under the manager's procurement authority, which is anything under ten thousand dollars. These are professional services. They do not need to go out to bid under your, under your purchasing code, and that these investigations are, one investigation has already started, the one that was brought by former Chief Steele, and the one that has been brought by former Assistant Chief Navarro will be started very, very shortly. And when I say very, very shortly, within the next couple of days. So, Mr. Childress has not in any way been involved in the ultimate selection of either of those firms. And I quite frankly, take my responsibility seriously. And I will also, I'll also state, so it's very clear, because there was somebody in the audience, I don't even remember who, had mentioned that it was Mr. Childress's decision to bring this investigation regarding former Chief Steele that's been lodged by, by Robert Navarro. That, that's not correct. It's actually just the opposite. Mr. Childress didn't believe it was necessary to conduct the investigation. And based on the allegations that Mr. Navarro brought, and based on the documentation that he presented, and I'm not making any assumptions whether it's true or not, because an investigation has to be done, but based on the allegations, if they're true, they need to be investigated and they need to be dealt. So that was a decision that I made, based, and that we're moving forward based on my direction with regards to that investigation.
Were you saying that this is under ten thousand dollars, he's allowed to hire? I mean, he's allowed to, as without a bid. Are you saying that this is not gonna go over ten thousand, because here.
If it, if it will.
Go over ten thousand dollars, you're gonna come in front of this commission and ask for more money.
Right.
You think this commission is gonna say, I'm sorry, we're not gonna issue any more money?
No, I don't, I don't expect that. I, I'm hoping that the, I'm hoping, I've had discussions with both, both the firm and the investigator. I've talked to them about the budgetary constraints. Based on the information that we know, we believe, we all believe that it can be done within the, within the ten thousand dollar range, based on what the hourly rates are. The law firm that has agreed to do the investigation based into the allegations brought by former Chief Steele has considerably reduced their rate, their hourly rate, below what they would normally charge, knowing that the Village's constraints, their, your financial constraints. And so, so has, at this point, so has the investigator who will be conducting the other investigation. However, to your point, what they are instructed and what's in their agreements is that if, if it appears that the cost of the investigation is gonna exceed the ten thousand, excuse me, the ten thousand dollar cap, they are to notify me, and yes, under your code, I am required to come before this commission and, and explain that, for whatever reason, the amount ran over, and that I need authorization to, to continue on with the investigation. And no, sir, I don't expect the commission to say to me, we're not gonna pay for it and don't investigate. But that's the process. That's the process that's, the process we followed was within your code. I take these allegations very, very seriously, and I believe they need to be investigated, and they need, need to be done in a transparent way, first of all, and in a way that there is no appearance of impropriety or any appearance of bias, so that the outcomes, when, when the residents and the public and this commission have an opportunity to see the outcome of these, that they have confidence in the results of. And that, that's the process that we followed, and I will stop speaking at this point.
Thank you. All right. Any other reports from the, any other Commissioners?
I would just, I had a report, but I honestly, I need to reply to Commissioner Samaria. That, so what you've repaired in your report was not accurate, and it was derogatory towards the manager in an unaccurate way. That's the second time from this dais you have said something that was not accurate. I understand, but when it's.
Wait, 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 time out, time out, time out, time out, guys. Wait, wait. Commissioner Samaria, he didn't interrupt you while you were talking, let him talk? Okay, well, wait. He's, he's caught, he's, he's, he's not, he's, he's, he's asking you a question.
No, he's not. You can't ask me no questions. There's no.
Okay, well, I will, I will frame it this way. I will frame it this way. Commissioner Samaria's comments were inaccurate, and they were derogatory towards the manager. That is the second time he has sat at this dais and said something that was inaccurate and derogatory towards the manager. By all means, if he has something that is accurate that he would like to share with the commission, I would love to hear it. But when it's.
Did you get the emails from these, from this?
Commissioner Samaria, you gotta let him finish. Then you, then you, oh, for the law. Let, okay, but let him talk, and then you can talk.
He always has a habit of doing.
Do you like, wait, 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 do you like people to interrupt you when you're talking? No, right? Let him finish, then you can, then you can finish, then you can talk to him back. Go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That, that's all I have to say. That is, I just want on record that that was inaccurate and derogatory in an inaccurate way. That is the second time that has happened.
Because I got the email from the attorney that says it's accurate. Okay?
Okay. Commissioner Amslar, do you have anything you wanna share?
Thank you. I was just saying, I wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Gonzalez to consider doing this for another four years, and that he might be a little crazy to consider it. But thank you very much to everybody that came and went through the paperwork with the clerk to try to see if they can qualify. Thank you. Keep trying. We need you. Number two, I wanted to say thank you to Mayor Alex Sisloom. I don't know if you guys were invited to the North Miami Music Festival this year. I couldn't make it, and I apologize. I told them, but I really appreciate the gesture of inviting. I'd be part of that community as well. I was contacted by U M, I don't know if you guys were, about, they were doing a research about resiliency in the cities and what we do to actually be resilient. I have a conversation scheduled for later this week, but my, I will obviously not speak for the commission. I just wanna know what this research is about. If anything, I think we could really benefit to hear from them how we can implement best practices happening out there. There's so much room for us to do more in this area, so I'm, I'm looking forward to that, and I'll connect with you after I hear more. We defined the emergency meeting, and then, yes, I, I wanted to make a note, there were two, I didn't feel very comfortable, and I think I said it out loud during our strategic planning session. I am very thankful that we did meet with all the heads of the departments. It's always great to hang out and speak with you, and I, my feedback was, you know, the first day, I was only able to come here Friday, not Friday and Saturday. I would have loved to be Saturday, but there was no one there, and it felt odd. And my main question was, was this communicated properly? And the answer is no. We have a resolution in place, actually, Resolution 2024-18, I believe. Pamela, if that's the right number, 2024-18, right? That talks about where these things need to be advertised, how long, the agenda, and that didn't happen. And I think it was a missed opportunity again to have people come over, gather advocacy, so we don't get pushback later on. Danielle, thank you for coming. You were the only one. Danielle's hunting. Danielle Huntington's wife. And on Saturday, I believe Ms. Anderson was there, and I called her, and I said, "How did you find out?" And she said, "Through Danielle." And I was scouting through the website. So I think, again, we need to make sure we push this the proper way. So we defined those ways, that didn't happen. So something's going to come out of that, but those are opportunities for residents to come forward and speak their mind. Same thing with the election. I think that we felt sure I was calling as many people as I knew had ever shown interest of considering doing. I got turned down for, by 99.9% of the... That's why I'm so thankful you said yes. But, you know, we need to advertise qualifier, not just the election, which is what's stated on our rules and procedures. I think that's something I will be looking into to see how we can retouch that, to make sure it's across the board. Qualifiers announced the same way that the election day as well. That's it. Keep it short. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you so much. All right, moving on. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
That was already done, no? Oh.
Have a second? All right. So let's vote on it, right?
Need a vote? Oh, yeah, not a roll call vote, just consensus.
Can I make a change to the agenda? Because then we go through this... I'm trying to see process, I'm sorry. I was going to ask to defer the item related to the GMS presentation, Paul's presentation, if we can have that as a PowerPoint presentation and have you lead it so that we can have an interaction with you. That's what I was hoping to see today. That's what I requested and I spoke with you about today. Instead, we have an item for approval. And that was not the idea. The idea was that we would have a conversation on how this would look like. I would rather have that opportunity to do it in that manner than just jump into the approval of this resolution. So I would ask to defer to the next meeting. Now remove it. I'm asking to defer it to the next meeting so that we can have that conversation in the format.
If I may, Commissioner, to be fair to Commissioner Samaria, he asked to have an item removed of consent agenda while we were discussing consent agenda just a meeting or two ago, and we informed him that that was not allowed because that has to happen during addition to additions and withdrawals.
Okay, I'm sorry, and that's why I wasn't sure it was the proper way.
That presentation would be-
Yes.
But to be fair to Commissioner Samaria, because his item was pulled, I would support not to do that. I would also point out that this item was in error approved by our prior village manager.
Correct.
So we're already paying that $30,000.
Correct.
We already agreed whether or not we said yes to it.
We never agreed to it, that's the thing.
I understand, but somebody agreed for us.
Okay, so we need, it's an urgent thing. I actually asked for this to come in front of us in the December meeting. It was pushed until March to have the time to elaborate it, which is today. But it's not in the shape or form that I was expecting it. So again, sorry, I'm not following procedures the right way. I would have liked to have that discussion, so that's all.
Well, maybe an alternative path forward is, because we can't remove it off to be fair to Commissioner Samaria, is we make that request to the village manager to have that presentation for the next meeting. I think that's fair for everybody.
I agree.
Samaria, compared to you, but...
Thank you. Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Would have the presentation for us. Can I get a vote, please? Yes.
We're good?
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
Yes.
One question. Can we just verify what you would like to see in that presentation? Because Paul's here, and-
We're going to get to the point, right? No matter what, I mean, it's part of the person, it's part of the agenda. We're going to get to the point.
I think Village Manager's question was, what specifics would you like to hear?
So that takes me back to an email sent to you in October. Conversations haven't had with you, Mr. Manager, about what I was expecting. And it's not this. It was a flow chart. We talked about roles and responsibilities. We talked about outlining each role, who does what. I think this is not it. Yeah, yeah.
Hey, because the Finance Director made a presentation, I believe, in January? January, you made a presentation before the council?
I think the missing point is the actual presentation that should have been on the agenda tonight was given to you in advance of this strategic planning so that it could be part of that process. For whatever reason, you haven't seen it, it sounds like, but it was sent out.
I haven't seen it, and I don't have it in the agenda for today.
That's the problem. So tonight, I was going to present that formally, but it wasn't on the agenda again. So I can't present it because it wasn't on your agenda. It's not fair to the public. As far as the contract, that's just paperwork that was already approved, no big deal. I will be happy to come back at your next available meeting. I don't think I can come to your special meeting. I don't think that would be appropriate anyway. And I'll give you the full presentation. The things you've just described are sitting in my presentation right on my lap right now. I'll make sure you get another copy.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're good?
Yes, thank you.
All right, perfect. All right, so we're moving on to discussion, bold business. That's, this is yours, Commissioner Huntington, do you want to?
Yes. Okay, so this was brought up last, in January. When the village manager came to our employment, he brought up to me that we don't charge impact fees. And this is something that a lot of other municipalities do. They charge for different things, new construction, new construction buildings for parks and police, public works, roads. It seems like something that we should definitely be exploring.
I'm sorry, you said the manager told you this?
The manager showed me that we didn't, and he told me about it. So I went out and did my own research, and sure enough, like he just says, there is a, quite a number of municipalities that have not, or do charge these things, and we historically have not. So I think it's a good option to explore. I think it's something we should look into. We should look into, have a study conducted to see what feasibility, what feasibility we can do to charge impact fees here in the village, whether or not it's appropriate for us to charge for police, public works. We have to justify it. I spoke with the village attorney multiple times on this. We have to justify it, so we have to get that study to see what avenues we can charge. But I think it's a great idea for an additional revenue. And we talked to our strategic plan about diversifying our revenue for the village. And these new construction houses are putting an impact on our community. They're changing our impact. They're making, they're knocking down smaller houses and building larger ones. But I think it's a great idea to bring in new revenue that can help fix our village when it comes to these large developments that we're having in, you know, that are being built.
You're saying that impact fees for new construction, right? And that wouldn't have to go into the building itself, into the building department, the general fund, and go to somewhere else?
No, there, maybe the attorney seems to want to touch on it, but there are fees that are assessed to the permit applicant for specifically use for roads-
Oh, I see.
-recreation, public works, police. And they can only be used for those assignments that they're feed for. And we have a certain time limit. We have to use them by six years. From the moment we charge, we have six years to use them. So there's a time limit on it, but it's money that we've, that other municipalities are collecting that we're not. And it's, I think it's a great way of diversifying our revenue.
Like revenue.
Is there a question? I'm sorry.
No, I thought you had something you wanted to say.
No, just-
I'm sorry, I was completely, yeah.
So the purpose of impact fees, and the Commissioner and I have talked about this privately, is, as he's explained, if you have new construction within the village that creates impact on the village infrastructure to the extent that there needs to be improvements or modifications to that infrastructure as a result of that impact from that construction, then you can assess these impact fees. What they require is, there's statutory requirements with regards to notice, how they're passed, but they will require you to hire an expert to do an analysis to determine whether or not these are reasonably connected to whatever, or has a rational nexus, whatever it is that you're trying to alleviate the impact of. So it's not a situation, just for an example, you have discussed numerous times that you need to improve your roads, that your roads are in repair, and they need work. You can't use impact fee money to repair your roads because that's already an existing condition. You basically collect taxes in order to do that. If you were going to, if that's what the purpose, if that's what you were trying to do, that's more of a special assessment than it is in an impact fee. An impact fee traditionally is usually, let's say, for instance, you have-
Destroyed mediums.
Or high-rise. Just the easiest example to understand, a bunch of high-rises within your community, which I understand is not going to happen here. And because of that, the roadways, the number of trips that those structures, those condominiums or apartments will cause to your roadways require your roadways to be widened, turn lanes, things of that nature. That's, that would be an impact from the new construction, and you can impose fees to raise funds to do those improvements.
So does any improvement qualify for this fee? So if, would any sort of improvement to my house or any construction that I'm making, if I understood correctly, would be subject to the fee?
Not necessarily.
As an impact fee? What would qualify me as being, you know?
And that's, quite frankly, that's what you need the expert for. The expert would have to do that analysis.
Okay.
And you would also, based on our retainer agreement that we have with the village, that's a financing program, and there would be legal costs as well from the legal side as far as drafting ordinances and doing what's legally required. And quite frankly, I'm not an expert in it. We have, we have an attorney in our firm.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to who would qualify as an expert on impact fees? That just-
There are experts out there.
There are experts on impact. There's, I'm sure, there's an expert for everything, and we've been hiring a lot of them lately. Al, you were going to say something?
No, just, Vice Mayor, thank you. Just to answer what Commissioner Amsler had asked. It's for all new construction. So exactly what's happening in the village, where we have a 1,200-foot square foot house that's being demolished, and you're now building a 5,000-square-foot house. So that 5,000-square-foot house has a bigger impact on the village than that 1,200-square-foot house. You have more people living there, and so that they're paying an impact fee for that five, for that new construction. It's not if I'm putting an addition on my house, I'm not putting a new roof on my house. No, just all new construction.
Yeah, that answers the question. So it's not just any renovation that I'm doing in my house will be subject to this. It's more the big impact of a new construction. So if I tear down a house and I start from fresh, then they will qualify, okay?
And Commissioner, if I will, I think, I share your concern is I would not want to impose a fee on residents who are just trying to paint their house or put a new kitchen, things like that. But that's not what these fees would be geared towards. It'd be geared towards that large construction site that's knocking down an old, you know, 1950s house and building our McMansion, as we like to call it, the, you know, 5,000-square-foot house that we would never dream would be here in Biscayne Park. That's typically developers that are coming in, not residents building those. And they're, they're making quite a bit of money off of our municipality by building these large things, and they're creating an impact and a strain on our municipality, and that's what these fees are aimed towards.
Yeah.
Do we know if, like, neighboring communities are doing it? Like Miami Shores, El Portao, stuff like that?
I know, the first time I heard about this was when Manny Sid came over as a-
Who?
Manny Sid was a candidate running for the same position that Mr. Childress is now sitting in. He was, wanted to be an interim village manager. And he was the mayor until past November of Miami Lakes. Miami Lakes? Yes. I said, right. Now he's working under the county commission under Mayor Caba. So he mentioned that he came forward with an impact fee that had helped tremendously in terms of revenue. That's where I had my note mentally came from, that has benefited the city. And I think, again, we are not, we're not the same as Miami Lakes, right? We don't have commercial, we don't have buildings, but we have an impact. I'm going to give you an example. If you guys go to Aldi, this drives me crazy. You go to Aldi from the village, right, near my house. You take 107th. Do you not go over those paths of concrete? I saw it fresh, and I still regret because I was going to the doctor, not having a phone call and say, "Can you, can someone pick it up? It's going to turn into a mountain that can go into your car." It's really a road in the freshly paved street that happened a few years ago. That is an impact of a cement machine going through a 107, right? And that, those sort of machinery, heavy machinery, and a road arose a different way than it would be a contractor coming to your house to do carpentry. So I'm giving very, you know, direct opposite examples, but I think that's where we sit. I love this idea. I think we need to be smart about revenue streams. And I think I would want to know more of examples and impacts in terms of revenues that's created. Say, if we look back at our last year and how many homes have actually been turned down and built up, how much money would have this meant? Say the impact fee is 2%. I don't know, I'm making it up. And that gives us an idea if the trend continues to be that. That could be an important revenue stream for us.
I was going to ask you, do we know how that's calculated?
Oh, I think your question of how many houses were knocked down and rebuilt in the last year? There were seven houses approved by Planning and Zoning to be raz and re-
Yeah.
That would be, our expert would conduct that study for us to come back to us and let us know what we can and cannot charge.
Okay, so can you find out? I don't, I don't know if you already know, but if Miami Shores and El Portao are doing this, and can you just ask the question, Al, of how these fees are calculated? Because, you know, while we may think that it's a lot of money, maybe it's not, right? And I don't, listen, money is money. I'll take whatever I get. But I also want to know what the cost is to bring in an expert, you know, impact fee person, whoever that is, and never heard of him, but what that would cost the village, right? So if that's going to cost us $10,000, and we're going to make $1,000 a year, yeah, I don't want to spend 10 years chasing $1,000. So I would just like to know, to see if you can get some information before, I mean, for me, if you don't mind getting me that information from the Shores and from El Portao and see. And I'm fine with, you know, getting, you know, talking about this and getting every dollar we can, but I want to do it smart.
And to add to that, for me, would be the, that line, right? I get we need an expert to define it. So that's my question in the air that I hope and this expert can answer. What is the line of the new construction? Are we talking the 50% that we, you know, if you have 50% of your house and it's to tear down and start from fresh? So that would be the impact that on top of your building your, you know, new home, you are going to be charged this impact fee? I'm just trying to understand that clear line of who is affected by it, the expert, right? And do we know in any way how much money could this person cost us?
No, Commissioner, you know, as you have heard tonight, we're a small city, limited funds. We always start the conversation with that. Before we would do anything, we would bring back to you a report on what the other smaller cities are doing, what, you know, are they making any money? Is this worthwhile before we go forward?
Perfect. I agree too.
And also, I'll provide the manager an estimate of legal fees as well. So, because that's something you need to factor in because there is definitely going to be legal fees regards to doing.
That's very, that's very true, and while you-
Just, and the manager is going to bring back that report, but just to give you guys a little thought about thinking, I did a little cursory look through municipalities around us, and North Miami, our north neighbor, is $5,692 per new construction. So times seven, it starts adding up over the years. Think of how many houses you've seen knocked down and rebuilt. The money adds up.
North Miami's a bad example, though, because that's a big city with big buildings. We don't got none of those. All right, so any other discussion on this topic? All right, so we're going to get, we're going to get some information back from you at the next meeting, Mr. Childress. Thank you, sir. All right, let's move on to discussion on Australian pine replacement plan.
Wouldn't that item be moved?
I think we already approved the agenda and included it.
And I I was her, so it's I leave it up to her if you want.
No, no, I think, yeah, uh thank you for that. I think they're just two separate issues. Mine was trying to move forward again from where we are and um how do we move forward for what just happened? We spent a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on a vendor to remove thirty-eight trees and now we have to reforest pretty much, so. The idea here is that I gather consensus from y'all to make this a priority when it comes to budget. Um I want to make sure that we set aside an amount of money and we can talk about how much that is. So that we can then go and match it against grants, then we can go negotiate with North Miami. It doesn't matter what we do to save that money later on for something else, but it is not touch. Because again, it's part of the essence of who we are and we need to have a plan that is thoughtful. The first approach came from the manager in one of my meetings, he um gave me the name of the farm um to ask for private donations, right? It can how can we get trees to reforest? And the first thing to my mind when I hang up after the call was we need a plan that is us again. We have a Parks and Parkways board, there is a reason for the board to exist. This is the perfect opportunity for community engagement and I don't want leftover trees. I don't want it to be whatever you can, you know, you don't have the money, free stuff. I want the trees to fit the village and I think it's a beautiful project for them to lead. So I am proposing that we formally appoint the Parks and Parkways to come and frame a tree replacement plan. Um I propose that we engage with professionals uh to get their input, whether they're arborists, environmental specialists, community stakeholders. I talked to some of the residents, I have so much knowledge. Um Danielle, I mean already what she share, I'm like wow, you know? This is an opportunity for that all of that to come together and the Parks and Parkway does it for free for us.
Joe has a lot of information too, he'll probably help us.
Joe, you're gonna be welcome, you're gonna be invited to that. Um but the community stakeholder already showed interest, you know, some of the residents are like, I'm willing to put my hand into that and help out. Um we have to think forward in the right way. So I think again, if we have to put money because we need to pay an arborist to save, the tree needs, you know, A, B, and C, let's do it now. Now before we're planting the wrong tree and then we're here again five years from now. Identify appropriate tree species that will thrive in our local environment and ensure budget allocations aligned with the goal of replenishing the canopy. So again, what I was I was trying to go around what the money is. So I did some uh question, I shared some questions to um Paul and his team. A lot of money spent cutting trees that they were able to identify, uh but there was a money showcase as to us planting trees. And I'm sure it's categorized somewhere sharing uh shared, but they're probably somewhere they couldn't find it. Uh that could be in the grants, you know, area, we done the grants in the past, I know that. Uh but I wanted to know feedback from first from the manager's perspective as to what we have currently in the budget. I think the answer is gonna be zero because of the current spend we went through. Um but uh also, you know, from you guys, what do you think is appropriate? From the history, we had allocated fifteen thousand dollars in the CIP specifically to replanting. Uh that was used for trees uh cutting down. So I'm I'm proposing that we start at least with the fifty thousand dollars to have a mandate. Again, this could be removed, a grant, you know, it's twenty thousand right there, we just need twenty thousand, we get up to forty if it's a matching grant. I don't have the number at hand and I think it's more background needs to be done, you know, and 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 digging into those numbers. But I want to have the conversation of the budget and and have a number in place. Um again, that would have been something to discuss uh during the strategic planning session, you know, um.
Wait, you're talking about the upcoming budget or 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 currently?
No, I'm talking about the current plan.
Okay, so financially you want to talk about it now.
Well, I mean, I want to know where the money can come from, to be honest with you.
Now.
Yeah, I don't know how the administration budget sits or Parks and Parkway sits after what went down. And there is a and a topic to talk about how we spend the money. If you remember in my last meeting, it was where is that money gonna come from and it was from there. So I'm not clear, I don't have an Excel with me and it wasn't provided for the agenda I either, we have numbers. Where can this money come from, I don't know, and that's the job of the manager. I want to allocate budget against it this year. If it's not possible to do it this year, I want to understand why.
So you want to find fifty thousand dollars now.
To put in a plan and start beginning with Parks and Parkway's a plan that maybe we can start by before the September, a new budget, you know, comes in.
So Commissioner, we wish you were there on Saturday on the strategic plan because we did discuss tree replacement plan. Um and we we as the commission came to the consensus that much like you talked about earlier tonight, it's a good time to slow down. That we talked to the manager that there are no funds unfortunately because of this big budget constraint to fund it this year. Uh but to slow down, really uh challenge the commission to go out and look for outside funding. There's been a ton of different ideas, you you know, the landscaping, uh the nursery that you approached.
Yes.
Residents have talked themselves about donating funds for memorial trees. I think those are all great ideas that should be fledged out.
Foundation.
And that all takes time and that and we have to take some time anyway because if you read uh read the email from Derm, they we had the ground has to be treated. So we can't throw a tree in the ground today, tomorrow, because the tree won't flourish, it'll die.
Yeah.
The Australian pine has polluted the ground with its own Australian pineness.
Yeah.
Okay, um so we we have time that we have to treat the ground anyway, that's time that we can do this the right way. I completely agree with you, I don't want leftover trees, I want mature native trees.
Correct.
That are gonna be beautiful for our community for decades to come. I think that it's a great idea to have the.
The next budget.
Start that plan, I think we should give them some some parameters to work with, native being one. Uh working with the residents who live in those in fact affected areas because I don't live on one hundred and eighteenth Street median. I don't live on, I live on one nineteenth, but I don't live on one nineteenth on that.
Correct, correct.
But the Parks and Parkways members don't live near there and I've heard personally from residents, I was gonna talk about my my uh commission report. That I've talked to residents who live in those places and they said, I want oaks. And I said, well, that's go to the Parks and Parkways and tell them you want oaks because you live here and why shouldn't you get what you want? Happens to coincide with I approached a part of my also my my um commissioner report is I approached the the local Audubon Society, Tropical Audubon Society. What trees are the best to replace for the yellow crown night heron? And they said oaks was one of the ones that when things start coinciding to me, I go, this sounds like a good thing. But by all means, I think we should uh include our Parks and Parkways board, we should give them some parameters, native being one, community involvement being another. And let's get the process started, let's challenge the commission to go out, try to however we can because if we get half of them donated, we get two tree mature trees donated.
Yeah, but we we need to know, so that's the fact that the truth the truth is you have different qualities of trees as well. What you know, I you're gonna get donated the cheapest tree that's out there.
I'm not saying donate tree, I'm saying donate funds to purchase trees.
Okay, money, yeah.
When I've when I've approached people so far for this, I've said, this is the funds we're looking for to purchase trees.
Yeah.
Because it should be Biscayne Park choosing what trees go in there. If the county wants to give us saplings, thank you, we'll take them in thirty years when they grow up into big trees. Right now, they're too small, they're this big. Um but I think that it's we should start the process now and by all means, I think we should budget for twenty twenty-six to have in in our budget. But I think that we need the manager to go out and once he gets that plan from Parks and Parkways, fledge out what exactly that's gonna cost. Because I mean, right now I throw fifty thousand dollars and it would just be a stab in the dark. I think that's part of our budget process that the manager will.
Yeah.
That plan from Parks and Parkways said, okay, you're gonna need twenty oaks, thirty oaks, whatever it is, and he's gonna formulate that.
I a hundred percent agree, for me, it was just the idea of a priority to have in mind, that money needs to be invested once and for the right way. Um I did speak with the manager uh with the with the residents as well in person. I did, as all of us did, receive tons of emails, complaints about not being notified of this happen and what the effects of that is too, right? Not only to the wildlife that we hear today, but also the shade, uh the beauty, uh their property value. Uh all of this is affected clearly by this. Uh and to your point, there's residents that are far and and you know, disengaged, not because they want to, because they can't participate maybe with Parks and Parks Way. That's why we have a board, I think I am with you. Um I am not so much into telling people, go and say you want an oak. I'm more about, let's hear what the Parks and Bar and specialists recommend and then gather the input and advocacy from residents with the knowledge on why that is. And having that said, because you know, this is not for everybody to choose now what they want to see in their backyard or in the front yard for that matter. Is this is what's right for the village and there is a long term plan for this. And I've, you know, we we have many stakeholders, I've spoken with some of them, they've been here many, many years, the discussion has been there for the longest time. So let's do it right. Um so as a next step, and I agree with you, let's have all disappointed to Parks and Parkways, let's search for what that plan could look like. I am ready to make some spend if we need some specialists to come on board, if we don't find it in any way, shape or form for free. Have some hours dedicated to someone analyzing what we have, the condition of a current trees, you know? Make sure that the whole plan is looking into consideration. Um the spaces that were now open with the Australian pines. Um and then why not some areas, I mean, they could they they don't necessarily just need to focus on thirty-eight trees replacement. It's also the other ones that maybe have not been watered properly, the ones that are close to dying, they haven't, you know, we gone from grants are not doing great. If we're gonna do the plan, then just do the plan the whole, you know, the 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 right way. So um I say we do that uh as an as a immediate action to the board. And have them come back to us as the next steps in terms of timing, together with what that would look like for budget proposition.
Commissioner, I want to use some brought us a topic that I want to touch on as well is when I when you drive one twenty-one median and look at the trees that are gonna be removed there, they're planted so close together. That when they were small, that was probably a good idea, but now as they are mature, a hundred year old trees, it's not, if one of them comes down, they're all coming down.
Yes.
And like you said, experts are weighing in, I think that that kind of gets into when we start selecting vendors, that they supply design build style, they they supply the expert. Who will tell us how far apart to plant these trees.
Yeah.
But a hundred percent, we need an expert to say, hey, we may not need, we're planting too dense.
Right.
I look good now, but thirty years, it's not gonna look good.
Yeah, and some of the considerations I've heard from residents that I want to be true to is, don't give me a tree that is a three foot tall tree in front of my house. Because you couldn't make the investment of a ten foot tree to start. And then we're here a hundred years bef- you know, obviously, we're not gonna be here a hundred years from now, not to see it. And and obviously, we're not gonna bring the same maturity of trees we took down, but that's part of the consideration, you know, um let's do it right. So thank you for being with me on this, I don't know if you guys want to add anything else to.
Add that when you brought up again, another thing a resident said to me was, don't give me a three foot tree, don't give me a tree that looks dead half the year, which.
Which is part of the issue, you know?
Years ago and right now, they look at them, they look like sticks, they think they're dead. Uh we should give, we should take that as part of the consideration for our Parks and Parkways to give trees that look beautiful year round, not just that flower in sometimes and dead rest of it.
Also, the idea of the vendors that we bring forward, you know, um and I want to be very respectful of what our public works does to keep those trees going. And the effort of watering is and it's a big effort and it costs money. Um then, you know, if it hasn't worked, that we had a contract that gave life to a tree for a year and then they disappear, then make it two years. What's the impact financially to do that they're responsible until these trees are settled the right way? I'm making this up, you know, I don't know anything about trees. But you you know, I'm I'm just uh trying to understand it, if we haven't done it right, let's fix it now, it's the time, okay?
John, do we have a a watering truck, do we have that, no, right? Yeah. Oh, we don't have one, John, okay? I have one, okay.
There you go.
I remember the last time we planted a bunch of trees, the vendor themselves were responsible to actually water them uh for a certain amount of time. Yeah, something like that, right? Because we didn't have the capability of doing it, which is a problem for us because the reality is it was great to plant them, but we gotta keep them alive, right? And maintenance has always been an issue for the village, right?
Us, money.
We don't have the, we don't have the infrastructure to, yeah, 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 yeah.
I think we all have intention here that we want to see these trees flourish, we want to see them be beautiful. And I think that's, you know, the manager can hear us talking, I think we we either the plan is outside vendor waters them.
Yes.
Or internally, we allocate funds next year to repair that watering trailer.
Have a maintenance plan, maybe it's a maintenance plan a year long that touches on how the in and they're responsible to replace it at the condition, you know, desired if it goes bad.
I'm just interested in also knowing, finding out, you know, we we removed how many or how many trees, thirty something? Yeah, and those were straight up trees that didn't have a a huge canopy. We may end up having only get twenty-five trees instead of thirty some.
That might be the plan then.
And because the canopy is much wider, uh so so we may not end up having to replace the thirty some trees, right?
Yeah, but I that might might be the case, but I think we should shoot for that thirty-seven because as a resident pointed out to me during us talking to them. We never replaced as a village, we never replaced trees that were lost from Irma. You know, there's there's mature trees in this um median, one eighteenth, another one, those trees were not replaced back to pre Irma standards. They showed me a picture of their Australian pines, but they showed me a picture of their median and said, look what it looked like the week before Irma. And we never replaced those, so if we only need to plant twenty-five, I'm sure we could find a couple other places to plant the rest of them. I think we should shoot high and then if we come in and we only need the budget for twenty-five.
We'll shoot as high as the money.
Shoot high at the number we 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 took out, replace that number because that that's the impact we we talk about impacts. We caused an impact to this village.
I agree.
Remove the thirty-seven trees, so even if they don't go in the same spot as thirty-seven trees came out, we plant thirty-seven trees throughout the village.
Yeah, I like that idea.
All right.
As a final note, and I have to say this, again, it was a very contentious item today we heard about. Uh it was the will of the commission in the last meeting that that be done differently to cut these trees. The direction was to hire someone with credentials um that would kind of sort of be in the same um sentiment as a village. And the protection of wildlife. I think this is an opportunity for us to think about what we can do so this doesn't happen again. And that would be part of the conversation we're gonna have in the special commission meeting. Uh but thank you for the support for this.
Um did you want to talk about thirteen B, the discussion of the funding or you already have all that information?
Yeah, uh Vice Mayor, that was actually my item. But I just wanted to, at at the last commission meeting, we said that we were, we had eighty-one thousand dollars budgeted under a line item. For um code forty-six point two zero zero. And then we're we're taking uh we're taking forty thousand dollars out of repairs and maintenance, transferring that ma- amount. Uh to cover the hundred and twenty thousand dollars since those that it's all within the same department, it doesn't need to come before your approval, but just wanted to let you know.
Anybody have any questions on the funding situation? I know that you wanted, you were asking about that the last meeting, Veronica.
Hmm, sorry, give me one sec.
One thing I want to just to clarify on the, did we get, when we went out to get this hundred and twenty thousand dollar bid, did we have bids from any other, any other end of, any other companies?
Oh, when that item came up, I had spoke and I said that we had gotten uh because it was emergency item and we were waiving competitive bidding, we didn't have to get quotes. But we still did get quotes, we got, we had uh um one quote that I think was significantly higher, it was almost twenty thousand dollars higher. And then we tried to get a third quote and it was non-responsive, so that was considered three quotes.
Okay, so we had no bids that were lower than that in a hundred and twenty thousand?
No, there was no, if there was lower, we would have taken them, yes.
So my point on this was uh, these are loose numbers to me in sense of they're written down on a report, I don't know what that means in terms of impact. And my question last month was not just where the money is effectively numbers coming from, but what does it mean in terms of impact? When um so there is a night line item forty-six two oh seven budgeted fifteen thousand dollar for fiscal twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. What was that meant to do, to be for, Mr. Manager? You have fifteen thousand dollar, what was the original purpose of those fifteen thousand dollars?
So that 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 original amount, there's the total is eighty thousand dollars, is it what you're talking about?
You're saying here, there is money was identified in the public works budget and object code forty-six two hundred for eighty-one thousand dollars. Line item forty-six two oh seven budgeted fifteen thousand dollars for this fiscal, doesn't say what was that for? So what was what was fifteen thousand dollars for under this code?
It was just for uh it was a line item for um certain maintenance of trees, uh planting of new trees. Uh removal of Australian pines, that was all. uh, removal of Australian pines. That was all under that same budget code.
Okay.
$80,000. That's total is $80,000.
Yeah, no, it specifically here doesn't say what it, so for me, again, I appreciate you putting in a memo. I, I, I had no doubt that you were gonna come up with a number and a bunch of numbers that add up to $120,000. The question is the impact of that within the budget and the purpose that we budgeted for. So for example, in Public Works, we had addressed via Public Works manager that we needed an additional set of hands. And I asked, does that mean we are gonna be losing the extra set of hand we approved in order to be able to fund the trees? At the time, again, we didn't have the data and I have to, to say this. On the record, I did tell the manager, this is part of coming together, prepare for items that are considered an emergency. Um, we have to have the information put together to be presented in a way that is clear, so we can make the best decision possible. And I did not feel that happened last month. So I appreciate it's happened now. I'm just wanting to understand what we're sacrificing.
Commissioner, we, we don't intend to sacrifice anything right now. So if, if, if we, if we are in need of money, we'll have to transfer some money around again. But I don't, I don't anticipate, uh, you know, sacrificing any services or any projects, no.
So for example, we're transferring $40,000 from repair and maintenance, that is of, uh, object code 46,000. Under the code, there is two different items, equipment and building, $30,000. What are there for?
Right, right. So the, so the first, first part of the, um, uh, fiscal year, I don't think we spent any money from that, from that line item. So there was nothing, nothing taken out of that.
Yeah, but they, you know.
Second half of the year, if the second half of the year, if we do, then we'll, we'll see where we have a surplus of funds, if there's anywhere within that, in the Public Works Department, that we have a surplus, surplus of funds and we'll transfer that into there.
But you're, are you not recognizing the $30,000 that you, you moved? What was that originally set for?
Forty, $40,000 were repair and maintenance. That was all repair and.
But for what? For the roof, for equipment, for?
Yes, just some general repairs. It doesn't say, it doesn't specify. It just says repairs and maintenance out of, out of that code.
Yeah, but we did have, again, I want to be, I, I get it. We had 12 hours of budget workshops against this. We went line item by line item on the importance of having this filter this way, okay? So at this stage, I'm not clear and it's, it's put together here. So I'll do my research with Paul as finance director to understand again what this exactly are, what I intended. But I wanted to have clarity, whether are we gonna have a worker additional to be out of Public Works? Or we're sacrificing that as part of this budget?
That, that worker position, we're still, we're still looking at that, how best to utilize that position? Whether it be a, a director and reclassify that to a director or, or something else. But we're still looking at that to determine.
Okay. All right. That's it for me.
So you didn't get your answer, did you?
No, but I'll figure it out.
Okay.
I will ask around and I'll get the numbers and I'll have further conversations to make sure I do it. Thank you.
All right. All right, so, um, that concludes our agenda.
Just to make one announcement, just very quick.
Quick, you got two minutes. Go ahead.
Less than two.
Just kidding, go ahead.
Less than two minutes, less than 30 seconds. Just to let you all know, just a stat, quick status on, uh, the, um, the progress of the, um, bulletin or the advertisement for the, for the manager.
Yeah.
I just, as we've been sitting here tonight, I just got a draft of the, um, of the brochure from Mr. Basinger's firm.
Great.
He's asked me to, he's asked me to review it to make sure that, you know, there's any changes or with regards to what the information, since I don't, I'm not intimate as to the information that's in there, what I think I'm going to do tomorrow is share it with you all and ask you to just provide comments back to me individually, obviously, don't reply all. I'll remind you all that on email and then I'll submit those to Mr.
Right now.
Oh, what's that?
So if you don't know that by now, you're.
Yeah, I know, but I still can't help it. I gotta do it. And then I'll submit your, I'll submit a, you know, a, a final document back to Mr. Basinger. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, Brad. Much appreciated. All right, uh, is there anything else that we need to discuss? No? So, uh, anybody wanna?
Motion to adjourn.
Time us out? All right.
Second.
All right. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.